Linda, you're on mute.
I'll come back to Councilmember Budge. Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Here.
Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
I love Zoom. All right. All right, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to go ahead and announce the video recording and playback schedule.
I think Councilmember Budge will be joining us. We can see her name. We just don't have audio for her so that the public knows that. But we'll get that figured out with her. This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Saturday, June 12th at 2:00 PM and Wednesday, June 16th at 7:00 PM. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call on Linda because she just got here to do our pledge of allegiance.
All right, you guys.
All right.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I think we're getting better at that.
Yeah, we sound like more like a robot even every day.
It's only taken a year.
Yeah. All right, Stacy, do you want to go ahead and bring up Mr. DeShawn? Yes, disappeared.
Hi, we're juggling a few things in the council chamber, so give me just a moment.
All right.
So here is, I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion. You know, it says a moment of silence in lieu of an invocation. Let's take a minute and celebrate all of the wonderful graduates this year and wish them our encouragement for their lives ahead. Graduates at all levels.
Great. Is that Mr. DeShawn? Dan? Pastor? Stacy? Did you get Mr. DeShawn up?
I have.
Okay. Pastor, unmute the button. He's gonna get it. There he is. There he is. You're muted. Pastor, you're muted. You're not muted?
His mic must not be turned on on the computer. Yeah, he's not muted in Zoom, but maybe somewhere.
You'll get it.
Does Dan know sign language?
Probably. Call him with your cellphone.
Then they gotta find his number.
Oh, Lord, what are you reading?
Oh, that is great.
Put it closer, what is it? What are we reading? Or I can do it. Is that?
Untrustworthy.
Is that Timothy 1?
All right, hold on. I got you.
Go ahead, Garrett.
Find it. All right. Read.
Says something about here in the trustworthy world, whoever aspires to something or other.
All right, hold on. I'm almost there. Pastor time. Timothy. Timothy.
I was gonna say, hold up the sign. He did better.
Timothy 1 what? Pastor? Put some fingers up.
2?
Timothy 2.
1, 2, okay. All right, Timothy 1, 2. Timothy, to my true son.
No, 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 no.
No?
Timothy 2.
Oh, 2, 1, my bad. Woo. Rockin' this. There you go. Okay, Timothy. Go ahead.
No, I just know that's what it said. Go ahead.
Okay, so Timothy 2, 1, right pastor? Okay. Paw in the apostles of Jesus Christ by the will of God in keeping with the promise of life that is in Christ Jesus. To Timothy, my dear son, grace, mercy, and peace from God, the Father, and Christ the Lord. I thank God for whom I serve, my ancestors did with concess. As the night and day, I constantly remember you in prayers. Recalling your tears, I long to see you so that you may be filled with joy. I am reminded of your sincere faith, which first lived in your grandmother, both and your mother, Unis, and I am persuaded now lies in also. Can I knock it out? All right. Sorry, typical Dave Goodies. Thank you for your time, pastor. And you look better. Our pastor there suffered a heart attack, but now is back and feeling better than ever and looking good. Lot more pink in your face, lot less tubes. So we're glad to have you in our city. All right.
We wish you well. Take care.
Yeah. All right. I'll send my tech team over to fix your computer later. All right. Presentation. We have introduction of new, I think, new employees. So I'm gonna call on, let's get Russell up. Oh, there he is. Russell? New employees, tell us all about them.
Well, good evening, Mayor Gatewood and council members. Russ DeShawn, Neighborhood Services Manager here to introduce two new employees. And I say two new employees, but they're two very familiar faces to our city staff and our residents. The first employee I'm here to introduce would be Mark Baxter. He is coming in as our community service officer. I'm sure many of you remember Mark as a RCPD officer. He worked for RPD for several years as a detective in our POP unit and most recently on Motors Team. Mark started on April 27th and has been tasked out with our parking enforcement and our abandoned vehicle abatement. And I believe Mark is on the line to say a few words.
Hi, I am. Hello, sorry I had to unmute it. And I really am enjoying my new role with the city and look forward to many more years in that fantastic city. Welcome.
I'll come back, Mark.
Sorry, our second employee is April Stevenson. April Stevenson is our animal service officer 2. April worked for the city in 2017 and left in March of 2019 to pursue other opportunities within animal care. But she stayed on in an on-call basis for that time between March of 2019 and March of 2021. April's got a lot of experience, 15 years of experience handling animals and doing animal care. And she officially rejoined our team in full-time status on March 29th of 2021. So April's on the line as well, and if she could say a few words, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, council and city management. Thanks for taking me back. I feel like the prodigal son. I am just so happy to be back working with the city. This is a really great community to be involved in and I just love the opportunity to do what I love. So if any of you guys want to see what animal services is like, feel free to join me for a ride-along. I'd love to take you guys out. My passenger seat is always empty as long as there's not a dog in it.
Thank you, April.
All right. So then, let's go ahead and call on there he is, Mr. Nam for all the new employees we have.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm Quoc Nam and I manage development services for Public Works. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of our Public Works team, Kevin Chin. Kevin Chin is an Assistant Civil Engineer. He received his degree from Cal Poly Pomona and comes to us with two years of design experience working for a private consulting firm. Kevin is very passionate about development and working with the community. I'll turn it over to Kevin to talk a little more about himself. Kevin?
I'm moving Kevin over just a moment.
Sorry about that. Hi, thank you for the introduction and thank you, Mayor and city council members. Yeah, my name is Kevin Chin. I am the new Assistant Civil Engineer. I'm very excited to be a part of the city, very excited to be part of the growth. I'm originally from Southern California and I made the transition up here just because I wanted to be a part of just the new excitement and the new growth here. And thank you again to Quoc and Albert for just, you know, being so welcoming and making the transition so smooth.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. All right.
Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time of the teleconference by Zoom. If you want to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you are participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star 9 to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community residence. Under the provision of California Government Code, cities prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or needs to be taken immediate action around after pushing the agenda. Stacy, do we have anyone for public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any general public comment for items not on the agenda. And at this time, there are no hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone. So, no.
Excellent. All right, so let's move on to council reports. Siri? How are things going?
Okay. So I attended the Al Grove School 2x2s. Donald will go into more details, so let's pass that piece on to Donald. It was a really good one, interesting for me to learn about it. I attended the Cordova High School graduation along with Linda and Garrett. It was, you know, it was wonderful to see the kids graduate. You know, the valedictorian, the salatorian, they all gave such wonderful speeches. It was amazing to see these kids, you know, speak about their parents even when they were on stage in spite of, you know, they themselves graduated in a pandemic. They had to go through so much, but they were, you know, so thankful. It was really inspiring to see them, hear from them. It's such a proud moment and it's a huge moment for these kids. And I must say, as many kids as I saw on the floor in the stadium, there weren't that many parents sitting there, you know, cheering on their kids. And this is a moment that, you know, the parents should be there. I don't know why they weren't. I mean, congratulations to all the graduates, you know, we are really, really proud of you. Rancho Cordova is looking forward to your great future. So that's on the graduation. Another person that I did talk to last week, there was a rally in Sacramento about fentanyl, raising awareness because of fentanyl poisoning. So, you know, as you are aware, fentanyl poisoning is rising at an alarming rate, especially for the youth. You know, they're not aware. They think it's a normal, it's normal to take off-the-counter drugs to see what can happen. Sometimes nothing will happen, but, you know, 26% of the time, something dangerous will happen. And this is some, we need to raise awareness on this to your youth. And I talked to Alyssa from Rancho Cordova, whose brother was 23. And he's a resident of Rancho Cordova and it happened because of one time that he used it. So it was, you know, eye-opener to learn, but more awareness, we need to raise more awareness about this in our city. So those were the key things that I want to point out in my report.
Thank you, Siri. Let's go ahead and hear from David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been reasonably busy, couple of weeks since we last met. The community council board met last week. I was a part of that, of course. And the big news I've got for you there is that our long-term employee, Melody Mayer, retired from the community council. There was a little sending away party for Melody. She had been with us for, oh, gosh, since way back in the beginning after we launched the community council as a city partner. And Melody, after I think it's 16 years, perhaps, I think that's the number, working there has decided to take on a different opportunity, still in our community, and she will be as involved as ever with her husband Conrad in the mock program. She will still be around as a community volunteer. She just decided that she had room probably for one more little career burst before her eventual retirement. And so she chose a different option for the next few years. So we're very happy for her. We're also very happy with the pool of talent that was available to be hired for the community council. So we actually may end up with more than one employee to replace Melody. And for those of you who knew her, that would be the appropriate need because Melody did an unbelievable amount of work for this community. So we owe her a huge debt of gratitude. I'm relatively certain she's not listening to this right now. I think she and her husband are off in Hawaii enjoying a little retirement or at least transition time. And we look forward to seeing her back with more great things to come from the community council, including an awesome 4th of July event coming up in less than a month. So 4th of July in Rancho is back. Cyrus may have more details he wants to share about this, I'm not sure, but there will be music and there will be fireworks. It will not be the entirety of the large event, but working with public health and the county, we have gotten clearance to do a pretty spectacular event. So go online now, get your tickets for that event. They are limited in number because of the health situation we're in. But other than that, it's gonna be a great event. There's also going to be a parade, but that's going to be on July the 3rd, not the 4th. We don't want to disrupt all those churches along Coloma Road on Sunday the 4th. So the parade will be on Saturday the 3rd. And I assume a lot of my colleagues, you'll probably be in the parade this year. There will be one significant difference. We're gonna be spread out throughout of the parade instead of clustered all together. That way, when the residents throw the fruit at us and stuff like that, we're spread out and, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna get the burden of it way out front.
You meant flowers, not fruit.
That's how we've designed it.
Flowers, not fruit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the flowers that they, the flowers that they run out and hand us.
Sure. Flowers, that's what it is. After a year of a pandemic, that's what they're gonna do.
So that's, that's the plan. Uh, let's see, what else I report on? Secog Transportation Committee met last week. Not a lot of notable things happened in the Transportation Committee, but something very notable is happening for Secog. Right now, the state is working on their budget for this year. This is a crunch week for the budget. And as it turns out, Secog has been pushing Green Means Go. You guys have probably heard about this somewhere, somehow. Green Means Go is a program that Secog is pushing because when we did our last MTP, our last Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the state Air Resources Board asked us to get a 90, 90, I'm sorry, 19% improvement in carbon dioxide emissions over year 2000 standards. Previously, I think we'd been held to a 17-year standard, Linda, when you were on Secog. I mean, a 17% reduction. This is something they were trying to do statewide, but we have some unique challenges that don't apply to coastal areas with regard to carbon dioxide emission, like how much transit is used here because less than 1% of our commuters use transit. Our density, the average distance of trips, and all of our agricultural users make that much, much, much harder for us to accomplish than an urban coastal community. And as a result of that, Air Resources Board promised us some supplemental financial assistance so that we could do the sorts of projects that would lower our carbon dioxide emissions so that they could approve our MTP. So it was a, "We will help you out if you go for 19 as we wish." So this is the helping out part. Now, I wish I could tell you, Air Resources Board was standing there with us helping. That's not really the case, but our legislative delegation from around Sacramento is stepping up. The idea is to focus extra dollars through Green Means Go on commercial corridors and projects like that that encourage some density, shorten trips for people, and therefore we can claim credit for lowering carbon dioxide emissions. Challenge is, the idea was so good that the chair of a certain committee decided, "We're gonna adopt this statewide" and took our idea and pushed it into a new program to be adopted statewide for commercial corridors. That pretty much obliterated our access to funding. So now we are standing in line for that funding, trying to get a designated share of it. So Assemblyman Cooley has been very helpful. Our other regional representatives have been very helpful. We have hopes that we might be able to get $100 million earmark for Secog out of this legislation, particularly in a year when the state is enormously flush with resources. So stay tuned. We may be calling you to call our representatives and urge them to vote yes on that. Right now, I think the number that's pegged for us is 50 million. We really need to get to 100 to approach the needs we have in accordance with that promise that ARB required of us here in Sacramento. So I don't know if I fully explained that situation before, maybe I have, but at least for Siri's benefit and others, that's where it is.
David, can I have one question? Are you talking about ARB or are you talking about the local air district?
Not the local, the state.
Okay, all right.
California Air Resources Board. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about that.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, California Air Resources Board, CARB, is the agency that sets that limit within the MTPs that they have to approve all over the state. And they were going after 19% reduction everywhere else, so they went and applied that to us, too. Unfortunately, we're not San Diego, we're not San Francisco. We're not LA. We have very different circumstances from those counties and those areas. Uh, let's see, my next update. We had a Trails Committee, not Trails Committee, we had a meeting about Trails. Albert brought out some folks who are involved in the running community and some coaches from Cordova. And we talked about trails along the American River Parkway and what might be grantable in the American River Conservancy in future years. So Donald, you mentioned, I think, in your report a while ago, there are no applicants last year. We're looking to rectify that and try to take some paths out there that are heavily used by people that have to be there for fire break purposes or county servicing purposes and just make them friendlier to runners. For example, there are some paths out there that have huge cobbles in them that runners can slip and fall on. And if we just improved those and made it like a DG path, it'd still be drivable and people could walk on it safely. So we're looking at that sort of application. I think we were all kind of overwhelmed by the potential of it out there. There are some incredibly beautiful segments that are not on the main bicycle trail but are still heavily used by pedestrians, horses, bicyclists, I think not legally, and of course, our residents. So that, there's a real opportunity, Donald, there, and I think we'll have to, we'll have to aim carefully on that one, probably with some guidance from you over what's possible. Siri, graduations were interesting. My foster son graduated from Cordova High School. He had the choice of either a drive-through graduation or he could bring two people and have them sit in the stands at the stadium. So I'm not sure how many kids actually chose to sit in the stadium with their two folks, but there were an enormous number at the drive-through. So Linda, I think, were you at the drive-through as well, I think? No? Someone else was at the drive-through. I'm not sure who of you was there. But any case.
Yeah, we were told that there were, Garrett, the number was something like 350 kids who chose to walk. So Siri and Garrett and I were there.
So there's about 100 and, 100 and or so that I guess did the drive-through instead. That's probably the split. But I know they went to great pains in the stadium to mark out where you could sit. You can sit here, can't sit here, sit here, can't sit here, all sorts of requirements like that. Finally, Regional Sand, we hired a new chief engineer for the district. We're also looking at separating ourselves legally from the county and from county administration. The county does a lot, yes. County does a lot of contractual things for the district. And we are looking at sort of a better form of managing ourselves as opposed to using county services for everything. So that being said, I think that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, Linda?
Yeah, David, I have one request. Actually, this thing about Regional Sand is really important because I know of one other organization where there may be a move to make it a little more independent than it is currently. No, I have a request from your Secog work. Secog is working on a study called some, something like the future of transportation, transportation future, something like that. And it ran through regional transit two weeks ago, even though I was really disturbed at the, at the lack of anybody's wanting to talk about it. But everybody says, "Oh, well, it's premature. We need to wait until Secog comes back with something." But it seems to me, just like always, as our, you know, as we always try to do here, we'd really like to be involved from the ground floor so that, you know, rather than wait for somebody to get an idea that they think is a great idea and then mandate it, we'd like to help in the development of the ideas. So if there's an opportunity for somebody to come from Secog and be on the agenda, actually, and make a presentation, whatever is the right time. Because I know that all the committees this month, maybe Transportation and the Secog Board, are getting updates from the staffer who is managing that study. So if they could come and do that kind of thing for us, that would be a real.
There is, there is an effort. It's really focused on the future of transit.
Yeah.
And it's kind of linked. We're being asked to do, we're being required to do this study, basically. It's one of the federal mandates. And tagging on the end of that are some of those rescue dollars that have come from DC. So the idea is you identify what the future transit is and then you've got some money to help fund that. And I think there's gonna be enormous angst probably among the transit providers of the region about how we proceed with this at Secog. Because I know, putting on my hat from the National League of Cities, an awful lot of our peers who run transit agencies are sitting around wondering, "I gotta make payroll, I gotta buy these buses, I gotta, I gotta do everything I was doing 20 years ago. I gotta, I gotta keep doing that and my revenues are down, my writership's down, how am I gonna do it?" And the reality is, you're not gonna keep doing that. You gotta do something smarter and better. And that makes everybody very, very nervous. So we did talk about that last week and we are very interested in getting that feedback. So I'll talk to that staffer about what exactly that outreach plan is and probably put them in touch with you.
Super. Or Stacy, or Cyrus, or Albert.
Okay.
They can, they can make up, make some, at least daylight the study with us so that people know what's going on.
Very good.
I'm, like, David, this has been an incredibly busy two weeks. We all probably need to know that tomorrow at 2 o'clock, the Board of Supervisors is having a meeting on redistricting. The, their. The, their, um, redistricting website makes it look like there have already been two meetings because there's two staff reports, um, listed, um. But tomorrow's sort of their debut to take it public, but they've really got a short timeframe because they have to adopt new districts by the thirty-first or something of December. Um, LAFCO met. The big issue at LAFCO is the fact that, um, Elk Grove is annexing the, uh, small area to the southwest of Grant Line that they purchased years ago with the intent of building a soccer field or, um, or, um, a fairgrounds for the county fair to get it, to get it away from, um, Cal Expo. And at this point, you may have read that they are talking to Kubota Tractor about building their Western Regional Headquarters over there so that the area is pre-zoned to make that happen and, um, and they now have permission to annex it. Um, David and I attended a, an event at Thin Line, which was very interesting, and, uh, it's nice to get out and see, uh, more of our breweries at the, um, within the Barrel District. Not being a beer drinker, I don't just go do that, so it was nice to have an event to go. They have a lovely place, it's very much, um, devoted to first responders. They have a lot of, um, uh, shoulder patches from really all over the United States as a display, and they have a lot of challenge coins from both military and civilian organizations. Um, and I'm told by the relatives I was there with that the beer was good, so. Um, ULI. Micah and I tuned into a ULI, uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was all about, um, the main theme was converting retail to residential, but they had some really interesting points that kind of has to do with the, um, Civic Center. Um, things like, um, when do we create a place? Because that's what we're doing over there, we are placemaking. And when we create a place, we need to always keep in mind that we want to create a place that people want to go. And then we had need to analyze what it is that would make people want to go there. Um, I think that was the, the point that struck me most. They, their example they used was from Plano, Texas, and it was an example that everybody can identify with, taking an old shopping center that used to have four anchors and now it's down to one, and trying to figure out, uh, what to do with it. The other important point was to be sure to partner, um, good design with financial success. And I know we've all struggled with whether or not, um, what our consultants are bringing to us can be a financial success or how to help them make it a financial success. So, um, we are not alone in that, in that need. Um, Regional Transit met, and the, um, the big announcement there is that they have gotten a state grant to put a very large electric vehicle charging station over at the Power End Station. And, uh, the treasurer even, Fiona Ma, came out to, uh, um, talk about it. So at ten o'clock on the twenty-second of June, they're going to have a, a ribbon cutting for this thing. Um, SMUD has, uh, has very progressive goals, they have, they've been doing a zero emission strategy. Um, from my perspective, it's really an opportunity for us to, uh, think about how we and where we go about, um, extending our network of electric chargers. The other exciting thing at SMUD is that they, um, our staff has been working with them to do a new route called the, um, One Twenty-Four Sunrise Commuter, which would return theater service to the Sunrise Station. It was ridiculous that they spent, I mean, from my perspective, it was ridiculous that they spent all that money to, uh, create a bus network that completely violated one of the basic principles that the light rail system was, was created around at the beginning, which was to make sure that all the light rail stations were hubs that buses would beat into and on a time schedule so that people could take the bus to their closest train station if they, if that was available to them, and then take the train to where they needed to go. And when they did that, um, RT Forward, they completely eliminated that for the Sunrise Station, which is one of our main comput- uh, commuter hubs. So they're gonna return that, and that's about time. Um, some of us attended the, uh, Sacramento Tree Foundation Annual Meeting. It, it's, um, Tree Hero Awards, but the hero this year was Ray Trethaway, whom everyone has known for the last forty years. Um, used to serve on the city council in Sacramento. And, um, it was a really nice tribute to Ray. There was a, a film that a lot of us participated in making, and, um, the evening was extremely heartwarming and very nice for Ray and his wife. And, um, it just kind of backed up the, the Grove that they have named for them over in, in the homeless area. Um, and then finally, yes, it's been graduation. Um, we went to Cordova High, and everybody's, even regardless of the split schedule, and Siri, um, just to reinforce David's point, the students were all limited to only two tickets for people to sit in the stadium. That's why there weren't a lot of people, but, um, so that's why you and, you and I and Garrett and, and my husband were all so lucky to be able to sit there on the field. Um, and, um, and I am pleased to announce that both Billy McGarvey and Charlie Budge were part of the graduating class of two thousand and twenty-one. And that's my report.
Excellent, congratulations.
Along with David's foster son.
Thank you, Linda. Congratulations to both of you guys. Good job bringing kids through. Donald? Yeah, that's awesome to hear about the graduations. Um, I, I will say that my, my days of attending graduations that aren't of my kids, I think, I, I, I did my fair share in the school board days back when, you know, at, at some instances, I had to cover, because we did my trustee areas, and I would go and cover Kennedy, I think, a couple times, and actually confer the diplomas and wear the gowns and everything, and, uh, yeah. I, and I grew up in, in, in the Santa Cruz area where it wasn't this hot to have an outdoor, you know, graduation in June, so God bless you for wanting to be out there. Okay, so, um.
I'd like, actually, I'd like the chance to get my gown out. It has not seen enough activity. But the heat is a little, little bit of a deterrent.
Well, and the funny, I'll tell you, as a school board member, it's interesting because they give you one, and I would just say that I, I didn't earn, uh, some of the, the things wrapped around my neck, get on my head, let's put it that way, but they give you this thing to, to wear, uh.
Well, we got a good explanation of who wears what and why, and.
Yeah, yeah, just, just, just understand, I never earned a hood, let's put it that way.
Siri and I, Siri and I did not, did not qualify, um.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't qualify for the PhD version, but, you know, we were qualified for our graduation gown.
That's right.
Well, I don't, I don't have one of those, I, I have half one of those, but I don't recognize.
Well, actually, I, I don't either, um, but what I wear is the one that both my kids graduated in, in ninety and ninety-three.
Uh, okay, so a couple of highlights. So, uh, I attended, I believe this was the first annual continuum of care meeting. Uh, so this was put on by Sacramento Steps Forward, which is the HART grantee and the HEAT grantee, uh, for the county. Um, it was mainly focused around service providers and end-users of programs, so actually formerly homeless people and people that are living in, uh, transitional housing programs and, and doing, doing work. It was, it was, it was really interesting, um, I, I, I had to catch the kind of bits and pieces in between some other meetings that I had during the day, but it was an all-day meeting that they, they put on. Um, as a follow-up to that, I believe I, I sent back my, my responses, but in August, the county elected advisory council, which I think I remember agreeing to do about eighteen months ago, uh, for the homeless council for, for Steps Forward, will be meeting with that group, this was actually the, the larger advisory group, which brings in all of the grantees and a lot of the other service providers. Um, yeah, so, uh, Siri was talking about Elk Grove, I'm gonna bring up my notes here on my other computer. Um, it was a pretty productive meeting, th- th- this was really the first one that we've had really talking about returning in the fall, or really growth of Unified Schools, which are in the south area of the city. Uh, they're both in year-round, so this is McGarvey and Sunrise. Uh, they're gonna be returning in, in July, um, and at this point, it's gonna be in-person, five days a week. Uh, the guidance from the state still really hasn't been clarified. I, 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 I'm sure a lot of you have been aware of, the governor has said that the tier system's going away, then, uh, late last week, he said that even while that's going away, that other things are not going away. Um, OSHA also just voted to impose mask-wearing, probably at least until October, it's sounding like. Um, so then, again, those are all, every update I just gave you was after our meeting with Elk Grove Unified. So what we've heard from Elk Grove Unified may not actually be the case today from what we heard then. Um, and Cr- Chris Hoffman was very careful to, whenever he answered our questions, he started with, barring no changes, this is what we expect to do. Uh, but what it looks like, their, their, their goal and their aspiration and what they're looking to do is kids on campus, at least in the elementary schools, five days a week, all kids on campus. Um, so yay for that, right? Uh, they've been working on, uh, additional vaccine clinics, and I know the city's been partnering and trying to get out the word to, to, you know, especially their twelve to fifteen-year-olds that are now eligible. Um, they, along with, and I'll, I'll bring this up for, we had a Sac City Unified meeting relatively around the same time. Um, but I think I already reported on that. Uh, Elk Grove Unified, Sac City Unified, I, I, we have our meeting with Falls Cordova this week, I think, at the end of the week. Um, they're all looking to use some of the, the, uh, rescue funds that they got from the feds to put on summer programs, so they're all gonna be doing, not necessarily summer school, but like summer camps, day camps for students, uh, trying to get them caught up and getting them ready for, for the school year. But they're all looking to, to offer, uh, some sort of summer-school-esque, uh, probably more focused on social or emotional learning than necessarily just getting caught up in math and, and, and reading and English and that kind of stuff. Uh, but we're hearing that come as a recurring theme with all of the school districts. We did have some updates around development sites for school sites. Uh, not a ton to report there, just that there are two elementary school sites that they are engaged in acquire, in, in looking to acquire. Uh, and, 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 and they're also engaged in, in the, the conversations around the, uh, the high school, middle school development. Uh, the one nice thing that I will share, and hopefully I'm not reaching any, uh, in, in comments in, in our conversation with Elk Grove, but they did put out an RFP for the design of the high school and the middle school. And one of the things that they asked for was experience in phased-in development. Uh, one of the reasons is because, uh, as a lot of you know, a lot of our conversations over the last four or five years have been urging the school district to look at a smaller seven-twelve school to build first, which would essentially become the middle school when they finally have enough students to build the high school, but not waiting until they have enough students for, to build a comprehensive twenty-five-hundred-student high school, but building something smaller that would accommodate grade seven through twelve on one campus. Uh, so that's great to hear that they're, they're actually engaged in, in trying to find somebody that would build in the, in the phased manner that we've been asking them to, to consider for a while. And, and of course, what this would do is speed up that eventuality, right? Because if we needed to get to twenty-seven-hundred, you know, high school students in this neighborhood, that's gonna take a lot longer than if it was, say, five hundred or eight hundred. Um, I think that's it for that meeting. Um, speaking of the air district, so, uh, the local air district, uh, different from the CARB district that David was talking about, uh, it's budget time right now. Uh, they are looking at a fairly hell, a better budget than we expected nine or ten months ago. Um, but still structurally, it's, it's not very good. Um, there's still a lot of unfunded mandates coming from CARB and coming from the EPA that are being dropped at the doorstep of the local air district without the funds for. Um, I, I think some of you, I, I've shared, uh, you know, the air, uh, there are some local air districts that have pulled the trigger on what's called the per-capita fee. So local air districts are allowed to charge a certain pers- a certain amount per individual that lives in the jurisdiction. Um, some jurisdictions have been willing to do, or some air districts have been willing to do that, three or four, I think, classes of the one around here. Um, but that's really been the, the solution that the state has given to local air districts is, "Yeah, we're having you do all these other things. We're not gonna give you more funding, but if you wanna raise taxes locally, you're allowed to do it." Not a very popular idea, not a very popular plan, but, um, it's something that they're continuing to look at. Um, the Children's Resümee, I think I shared this, did open to members last month, and I believe by the end of the month, they've now gotten to the point of opening it up to the public. Uh, you wanna visit their website, it is by appointment only because they still need to keep, uh, uh, attendance and the number of, of people inside at, at, at a certain cap. Uh, speaking of caps, I did attend, uh, the first steering committee for cap-to-cap. For those of you who, I'm hoping by now, most of you've gotten the invitation, but I, again, I'm gonna be chairing or being the team lead for the, uh, Community Resources, which is a homeless, uh, homeless services and affordable housing committee. They are going to have an event in October, uh, it's going to be virtual, uh, and still a lot to be worked out, but if anyone's interested in being on, on our team, uh, we're gonna be approaching it similar to the ways we've done it in the past, or we're gonna be using the city's lobbyists to set our meetings and our appointments. Uh, and it's usually one of the more robust teams, uh, in the region. Oh, about the air district, I forgot one other thing, and I think it already started this week and maybe even gotten some, some media coverage. Uh, but Beal Air Force Base is going to be doing a series of prescribed burns, end of last week and this week. One of them, uh, uh, in total, about thirty-two-hundred acres of prescribed burns. Uh, and one of them, uh, at one time, is gonna be almost tw- almost two thousand acres. Uh, so pay attention to that. If you're, if you're wondering what all of the smoke is to the north, that's what it is. Um, I mentioned that we're having Falls Cordova meeting this week. Uh, finally, I, I think I, I did share about this, but I wanted to share something just cool that happened. Uh, so I, I joined the Los Rios Colleges Foundation six weeks ago or so, but I had my orientation last month, and right before we started our orientation, we got to jump on, uh, the graduation of, uh, the Sac City College Nursing Program. And the really great thing about that was the foundation had raised about seventy-five thousand dollars at its latest fundraiser, and that was actually enough money to cover all of the, the exam fees for every nursing graduate, um, that's coming out of Sac City College, uh, which has, you know, members of our community in it as well. Uh, but every one of the nursing students are gonna have all of their exam fees, um, completely covered when they go to take their, their exams to get their nursing licenses. Uh, so very cool stuff, uh, there. And I think that's it for me.
All right, Donald, thank you. All right, so for me, uh, amazing graduation, made to see all those students, a, a very diverse group in, uh, Cordova that graduated. Uh, I feel sorry for everyone that tried to master those names, but it was an amazing graduation. Um, I got elected as vice chair for the Cable Commission. Good to know that the Cable Commission, um, this is the first time I've ever been on the commission, and we didn't have litigation, so yay for that. Uh, but they seem to have a lot of money, and hopefully, they're, they're taking projects right now, so if there's anything on that end that we need, they're looking for projects, and they, um, they look good on their budget. I'm, uh, also the vice chair for the Library Commission. Um, their budget is really strong, and then now they're going into negotiations with their union right now, but as for budget, looks like they're gonna come out ahead or at least even. Uh, so that's exciting. And then, uh, something I, that's close to my heart, uh, basketball, basketball Ranch Cordova, uh, Ranch Cordova's own, and first basketball, and it'll be like a Little League basketball. Uh, thank you to Dennis, uh, Michael Laurenta and Dennis Lamenta. They're gonna be starting that up, so everyone should get excited because our first one, we even found us, um, a group to partner with that should be giving us affordable, um, basketball courts to have this thing, uh, or, or organization run from that, uh, will be able to allow us to grow and grow into bigger and better things. So thank you, those two. And lastly, I'll be closing this, uh, meeting. Um, so, uh, in, in the African-American community, um, most people have one person they go to for, uh, counseling, um, uh, counseling, uh, financial advice, and, um, a haircut. Um, his name is Cecil Dyer. He's one of the largest, um, uh, black-owned, one of my first black-owned businesses I ever knew of, and, uh, he basically touched most African-Americans that I know of in Ranch Cordova, Sacramento region. Um, truly a, a. Truly a, a stalwart individual, started a church, uh, grew up in Bakersfield, moved out here. My, uh, my dad's family is from Bakersfield, so they knew each other. Came out here, started one, um, uh, one, uh, barber shop and then started another. When I was looking at entrepreneurship, he's one of the few that would actually talk to me about it, um, at different angles and just a, a, an amazing individual, eventually started a church in the Fair Oaks area, such sites, gave him an award, commendation because of all the stuff he's done in the area and just a, a genuine nice gentleman. So, um, I'm gonna be closing this council meeting on that, seeing that we've really lost someone that was near and dear to this community. So, thank you. And at that, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Cyrus, uh, for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I will be brief. One thing I have brought to the attention of the council before, it's, uh, SB 1383 and AB 1826, that's related to organic waste. As you recall, this is, um, a new law that will go into full effect on January 1 of 2022. And with that comes the requirement for the communities to, uh, basically do organic waste recycling. It's a significant undertaking and something that we have engaged with our, uh, service provider, Republic Services, to find out ways that, uh, will make it easy and, and most convenient for residents and businesses. So we, we would be bringing to you, uh, in short order, some, uh, proposals and some discussions related to, uh, the way this would be handled. But I just wanted to be sure that you have that on your radar screen because that will go into effect statewide and it has, uh, very serious implications on how, uh, organic waste is being handled. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, uh, point out, uh, related to the, uh, comment that, uh, council member Sander made about 4th of July, as he pointed out, it's a two-day event. We have the parade on, in, in the morning of Ju- July 3rd, followed with, uh, uh, a concert and, um, and a fireworks at Hagan Park that starts around 6 o'clock. It's a, uh, ticketed item. And, uh, the same, uh, thing, uh, the, at 6:00 PM the following day on the 4th, we will also have, uh, the same event repeated, uh, on the second evening, uh, the same exact arrangement. So, uh, uh, great work by, uh, the, uh, parties involved. I know, uh, uh, Shelly and her team with, uh, Cordova County Council have been working with the county health office, CRPD and others to, to make sure that this plan is event, uh, this, uh, this event is planned and goes, uh, smoothly on, on that day because, and, and there is a great need for it. We, we skipped the celebrations last year and then there's a great deal of interest and, uh, excitement about this happening. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to point out, council, is, uh, you should all, you should all have received, uh, an invitation from, uh, uh, CRPD related to our community pool opening that is, uh, planned on June 28th, uh, at 8:30 AM. So hopefully that, uh, you, you can make that, um, work on your schedule and, and attend the event. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, one really quick thing, just because I like to brag about our city. Ranch Cordova's, uh, U10 Little League, congratulations to Marty Sloan, just whooped up on everybody in the region and took the championship home over Memorial Day. So congratulations to our future lancers. Our baseball program is gonna be one of the top programs in the region and I see the, I see it in the future. So good job, guys. All right, let's go into consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull the item and item for an individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. Call, uh, Stacy, uh, for consent calendar.
So the-
Are there any council, go ahead.
The city clerk's office has a few edits that we would like to acknowledge before we turn it over to the council for the consent calendar. One, we received a, uh, public comment from FISA Mughal that you have all received, um, via email and that has been distributed to you. And the city clerk's office has a few edits that we would like to share with the city council and to be able to read into the record, um, with regards to edits. The first is related to item 9.2, a resolution declaring the results of the mail ballot election for Ranch Cordova Transit Related Services Special Tax Area, Zone 2B for the High Class Motors Project. The resolution included with this item references ordinance number 10-2021 and it should be corrected to reference ordinance number 9-2021. The second edit is for item number 9.13, a resolution approving the final map of Rio de Loro Lot Number 67A, subdivision number FM 2019-004-02 and authorizing the execution of the subdivision improvement agreement, contract number 2021-89. There are some minor edits to correct lot letters that are referenced in notes and on the map sheets. There's also minor edits to fill in the blank map book and page referenced on the map sheets. Lastly, for item number 9.14, a resolution approving the final map of Rio de Loro Lot Number 67B, subdivision number FM-2019-004-03 and authorizing the execution of the subdivision improvement agreement, contract number 2021-90. There are minor edits to correct lot number, not lot letters referenced in notes and on the map sheets. And there are minor edits to fill in the blank map book and page referenced on the map sheets. These edits will also be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any council wishing to pull from the consent calendar?
During none, I'll move approval of items 9.1 through 9.15 with those edits as noted by-
I'll, I'll second it. Mr. Mayor, may I make a quick comment here on, uh, item 9, 9.2? I believe, uh, city clerk mentioned two Zone 2B, that's Zone 28.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, yeah, so what's in this, the agenda's correct then?
It is, it is correct, I'm sure.
Sorry.
All right.
Okay, um, so I'll second, I, I do wanna make the caveat that that seemed like an inordinate amount of corrections to be made and maybe in the future, if we have items that, that, if they're not of a timely manner, we should just maybe pull those in the future, put them back on another agenda. So, but with that, I will happily second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
And she froze.
Councilmember-
Or did I freeze?
She's unfrozen. There she is. Go Linda.
Linda, we didn't hear you.
I didn't get anything.
Oh, she called on you.
Oh, that's yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna do my part first and then Donald's part. Okay, consent, I, public hearing items are, uh, consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless the item, the, uh, member of the council wishes to pull items in individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion.
Um, could we, uh, could we pull 10.1 just for a minute? Because I wanna talk about it a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, so remind me, Adam, Cyrus, how are we, which ones of these can we pass first? And then Garrett's gonna recuse himself from some of these?
Uh, yes, uh, on item 10.1, uh, council member Sander has to recuse himself. And on 10.10, uh, Mayor Gatewood has to recuse himself because of the, uh, conflict they have on the, these items.
Did we wanna state the reason that David's-
Yeah, because 10.1 is Rio de Loro.
Um, uh, because of a, a, a financial interest, uh, in, uh, a, a, a personal financial interest relating to a company.
Okay, then I will move approval of 10.2, uh, through 10.1-
Councilmember Budge, this is-
Hold on, hold on, Linda, Linda, I gotta open the public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Okay. So let's, let's be very specific, wait, hang on, hang on. So 10.1, you wanna make a comment on David needs to recuse himself from that? And Garrett's recusing himself from 10.10?
Yeah, is that what I recused myself from 10.10?
And I don't-
The motion is-
And, and that's, and that's because, that's because of a, uh, uh, his company has an interest in the subject of that action.
Yes.
And, um, item number 10.8 needs to be continued to the next meeting.
Goodness, okay.
So 10.1 through 10.9, which includes, I mean, 10.2 through 10.9, which includes the, um, continuance.
Okay, let me- 10.8, so we're, maybe I can help. We're moving 10.2 through 10.7
I thought it was 10.9.
And 10.9 right now. And we're continuing 10.8. And the 10.1 and 10.10, we're going to bring up separately.
Correct. So I'm gonna go ahead and open public hearing for Donald's motion. And do you have, do we have any public comment?
So I second Donald's motion.
Wait, hold on, hold on, I gotta do public comment before you guys get into it.
You can still take the motion.
Oh, again, okay, go ahead.
So the motion was, um, Vice Mayor Terry. And the second was, um, Councilmember Pulapati.
Correct. Now I'm gonna have a public comment. Any public comments, Stacy, on those items?
Just to be clear, the public comment is for 10.2 through 10.7 and 10.9, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
So we do have a hand raised, um, Bob Thurbin.
Go ahead, Bob.
Bob, you'll have-
Bob, wouldn't you be talking about 10.10?
Why don't we pull, why don't we ask what item he's talking about and, 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 and take the motion on all the other items?
Yes, can, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, what item are you wanting to talk about?
Yeah, I, uh, I wasn't, I raised my hand earlier because I wasn't clear when you were gonna act on 10.10. And so that's the item I wanna speak to.
Okay, we'll, we'll get there in a sec.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, seeing, so seeing no, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And then ask for roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye. All right, let's go ahead. David, go ahead and pop off and we'll do 10.1.
All right, I'm out, thank you.
All right. All right, can you read 10.1, Stacy?
Rio de Loro Delivery Station, Major Design Review, Project Number DD 10030, located within Rio de Loro, Specific Plan Parcel 63A and B.
So, um, my only, um, what I really wanted to say was that we, um, we asked that this be continued and that staff and the applicant work a little more on the landscaping. And I want to compliment everybody on having done that because, um, any way you look at it, we are sitting here in the midst of a very handsome office industrial park that has its roots to the early 1980s. And, uh, the way in which this industrial park looks, office industrial park looks, was specifically because of requests from the, um, developers, especially the initial developers, McKeon and Steele, who were coming up for the Bay Area and they wanted the same kind of environment that they had enjoyed in the Bay Area for marketing purposes. So we actually invented a zone, MP, called the Industrial Office Park Zone. And the idea was that people could use, um, their buildings, they could construct buildings for either office buildings or, um, uh, roll-up industrial or tilt-up industrial buildings with roll-up, uh, doors, uh, for delivery and the 25-foot, um, office space, uh, at the front, or 25% office space at the front. But they wanted what was at that point, classic business professional zoning. And that's how we got all these wonderful 25-foot landscaped decks with all of our trees. And this area, we are really blessed with an area that does not look like Power Inn or some of the areas, um, west of Sunrise. It's a very handsome area. And we just need to make sure that, um, even though we have development agreements in place with Elliott and, um, Aerojet for Rio de Loro, we just need to make sure that the industrial areas that we're developing there in 30 years are going to look as good as we do here in our central business district. So, um, I just wanted to make that comment. I know that Darcy and her staff worked on that and that the people at, um, um, the landowners worked on that and I want to compliment everybody. And with that, I will move the item.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, I'm gonna open public hearing. Is there any, uh, people that wish to comment on 10.1? Looks like there's one, Stacy.
Patricia Ramirez, you'll have three minutes for public comment.
Good evening, uh, city council. I only have, uh, three questions. I, I heard that you guys have a development agreement with this project, am I correct or wrong? Yes, no, maybe? Okay, well, my three questions are, uh, whether there be a commitment to utilize local hire? Uh, my second one is, uh, will the contractor be required to provide, uh, workers' healthcare? And number three is, uh, will the contractor be required to pay the air standard wages on this project? And number four, will the project reinvest in education of the next generation by requiring the use of state-certified apprenticeship? And those are my questions and thank you very much for letting me speak.
All right, Stacy, does it look like there's anybody else?
I do not see anyone else in the queue to raise their hand.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander? Uh, has recused himself from this item. Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye, all right. So at this one, I'm gonna fall off and-
We have 10.8 to do?
Continue.
That was continued, Linda.
Yeah, well, so, so, hang on, hang on, hang on. Before you leave, let's, let's vote to continue it.
All right.
So I'll move to continue 10.8?
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, do I have to open public hearing for this one as well? Adam?
Uh, uh, no, and, and, uh, I'd like to tentatively continue this to the next meeting, but we will need to take a look at the, uh, process because there's a possibility that we'll need to redo the resolution of intent in order to bring it back to you. So we'll tentatively continue the item, but, but we may need to come back to you with a read option.
All right.
So we should probably, oh, David is back, nevermind.
All right, I'm out.
No, not yet.
All right, but I'm, I'm, uh, motion to continue to the next meeting and again, we may-
You can vote on, you can vote on 10.8.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, Donald, you got it.
Okay, thank you. First, I ask the clerk to remove all public commenters from the room.
Yes.
We'll, we'll ask for comments in, in a bit, but I, I don't want live mics on except for peo- people in the meeting. Okay, thank you. Uh, so with that, we'll take up, uh, item 10.10, and I believe there's a staff presentation. Cyrus?
Uh, yes, yes, there is, uh, Stacy, if you could, please bring, uh, Elizabeth's program.
I see Darcy and Elizabeth. Whoever wants to go first, go ahead.
I will.
Elizabeth, you got your camera on first, go ahead.
Sure, yeah. Um, if you could bring up the presentation, please, City Clerk.
We're bringing it up.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'm gonna have a brief presentation about some entitlement modifications to the Rio de Oro project. Next slide, please. So the recommended actions is a little bit different than what was in the staff report. We're gonna waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, but the second reading is going to occur on August 2nd instead of the next council meeting. And then we'll be asking you to adopt the resolution. Next slide, please. I'm gonna read positions, I can read this. Okay, so the city desires to develop a cooperative arrangement with the Cordova Recreation and Park District for provision of park facilities, services, ownership, operation, and maintenance of parks in Rio de Oro. And until this arrangement has been established, the proposed actions would cause all parkland in Rio de Oro to be dedicated to the city. Next slide, please. CRPD has adopted various documents, including a master plan, a NEXA study, design and construction standards, as well as through some of their PDA geo-technical standards and specifications for neighborhood parks. So for continuity and design and construction, the city intends to apply those CRPD master plans and standards as adopted until such time as the city updates and adopts any new documents. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna spend a minute on this slide. So to effect a general change for all parkland in Rio to be dedicated to the city or any entity designated by the city and remain consistent with the general plan, we have several amendments. Some of the amendments are being done by ordinance, and some of these are being done by resolution. So the documents that were originally adopted by ordinance, we have to amend by ordinance and same by resolution. So the ordinance before you tonight has three exhibits, and those exhibits are just the redline pages only instead of giving you the entire document for brevity. And so Exhibit A are amendments to the general plan. Exhibit B is 2021 amended Rio de Oro specific plan. And Exhibit B1 are the design guidelines. We call it B1 because originally the design guidelines are in Exhibit 2, the specific plan. The amendments by resolution include two sets of conditions of approval. So the master conditions of approval were approved in 2016, um, with the large lot tentative map on the tier-two approvals for the Rio de Oro specific plan. And then subsequently, in 2017, the parcel 67 conditions were approved with the tentative subdivision map for parcel 67, which is Rio de Oro's Phase 1. So those conditions are attached as Exhibit A and B, and they are in their entirety. Exhibit C are updated redline pages to the public facility finance plan. And then finally, as mentioned on the previous slide, the resolution also approves the application of the CRPD master plans and standards for continuity and design. Um, I will say that the effective date of the resolution coincides with the effective date of the ordinance. Next slide, please. And this is my final slide. The staff recommends that the city council waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, realizing that the second reading is going to occur on August 2nd, 2021, and adopt the resolution. So that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so with that, and I think he had a fa- a fancy gavel. Mine are all hung on the wall. Uh, so I'll open the public hearing. Uh, let's go ahead and take public comment now, Stacy.
So, uh, the City Clerk's office has received, um, one public comment via email, um, from Patrick Larkin, the General Manager of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. And second, we have a hand raised from Bob Thurbin. Bob, you'll have three minutes.
Can I just make sure, Stacy, do we have any other hands, or is that the, the one that we have?
That's the only hand as of right now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, good evening, Vice Mayor Terry and members of the council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Sometimes I'm technically challenged with the Zoom meetings. As I think most of you know, uh, my name is Bob Thurbin, and I am General Counsel to Cordova Recreation and Park District. You have before you, or should I have before you, a document, uh, that we filed with the city today. Um, it is a notice of objections to proposed governmental action and also a supplement to the administrative record of the public hearing, uh, and any hearings that follow. Uh, the, uh, purpose is to, uh, make sure that the city makes this particular document, and we respectfully request that you make it a part of the administrative record in the tonight's public hearing, as well as any future public hearings on adoption of the ordinances and actions to amend or modify the proposed, uh, the, uh, proposed amendments to the land use documents that you are considering addressing. Um, I won't read, uh, the notice and the substance into the record. It, uh, document speaks for itself. Um, generally, the basis for our objections and our intent to proceed with an action to, uh, challenge and set aside and vacate the, any action on the ordinance and the modifications, uh, is that the Cordova Recreation and Park District is the, uh, appointed jurisdictional agency for purposes of delivering park services. Uh, and, uh, they have the jurisdictional area to provide and the jur- jurisdictional authorities provide those services within the city boundaries. Uh, this was affirmed and is a condition of, of the original incorporation of the city. And you can find references in our document, and also you can explore the original corporation documents. Uh, there is an effective way to make a change in, uh, service delivery, and that requires the city to comply with the Cortez-Zinox Local Government Reorganization Act. The documents that you're amending, if you look carefully, um, substitutes the city as the park provider for the Rio de Oro area. Legally, that's a de facto modification of, uh, detachment of consolidation or merger, partial merger at least, of the, uh, authority and services of the special district, CRPD. That can't be done without compliance with, uh, the relevant act and also the LAFCO process. If you proceed with that action, ultimately what it does is it circumvents the LAFCO process, impairs their jurisdiction, and it denies the public the protest process, uh, which includes the district's ability to protest, and it, uh, denies the election that has to follow from the voters in the community. So we think it's legally defective for that reason. Additionally, you're relying on three sections, uh, one constitutional provision, two government code sections, that if you review those, they did not provide the authority for you to expand your land use authority under the general police power to modify the jurisdiction and service delivery of local agencies inconsistent with what exists in LAFCO.
Bob, it's been three minutes.
All right, I'll sum it up. So, uh, we respectfully request that you include this in your administrative record, and our purpose here is to preserve our objection for our, uh, planned superior court proceeding uh, to challenge any final adoption of, uh, documents that amend these, um, uh, land use entitlements as you already, uh, signaled in your, uh, documents that you posted with this agenda item. Once again, respectfully, thank you for giving me this time. Sorry to go over, uh, but again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, do we have any other public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, any comments from, uh, council? Seeing none, I'll.
I would, I would comment just, uh, just, just briefly. Uh, colleagues, I know, you know, you're, you're aware of this, but everything we engage in here at the city is really aimed at raising standards and providing the best possible services and opportunities for our residents. So, you know, if I was going to frame this action, it would be with that context. This is about nothing more than finding the best opportunities and, and ways to collaborate, um, for our residents. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that in this particular case, and so this action is our next logical, uh, our next logical step. Um, we have proven to be a really powerful ally for other organizations, and I'm hoping that, uh, the Park Agency in this case could see us as that as well. Um, I think if you were to ask the other agencies we partner with, some of which are, or have been on the agenda tonight, you would see what a powerful ally we can be in raising, uh, standards and services for our residents. So that's the, that's the context I head into this with. That's the context I think we head into this with. And I also want to just note that there is not an immediate, uh, action on this particular ordinance. It's not being heard again by us until August the 2nd, which does give us a lot of time to, to talk.
And is that a motion, David?
Uh, sure, I would move approval.
Okay, I have a motion by.
Mr., Mr..
I have a motion, but, 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 before. Hang on, let me just take the motion. Carry on, hang on. So I have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Uh, City Attorney has a comment, please.
Thank you. Um, just a couple notes about, um, the proceedings and the comments that you've received. Um, first, I would note that there, there is no action here recommended by staff or taken by the council, uh, this evening, um, by its actions here tonight or in the recommended documents that would commit the city exclusively to, um, a particular, uh, course of action with respect to a joint powers authority, a joint powers agreement, or a particular form of collaboration. I think the city's intent here is to pursue, uh, its authority to engage in a collaborative process with CRPD to provide the best quality services together for the city of Rancho Cordova and its residents, um, to ensure that those services are delivered in a way that is effective, efficient, um, and non-duplicative. Um, the city manager may have certain additional comments, but we, uh, appreciate, uh, the comments from CRPD, and we, we do believe that the city has rights within its police power to proceed as recommended. And we look forward to a productive conversation with CRPD about the service, the services, these services to the residents of the city of Rancho Cordova.
Counsel, if I may just simply add to that comment and echo, and echo what the City Attorney and Councilmember Sanders said. We have every intention of, uh, working and, um, and having a, a dialogue with CRPD to find a solution, a collab- some collaborative approach that could provide the best park services to our community. I think the point that we have made and, uh, in some of the conversations that we've had with, uh, CRPD staff and, and others, we are, you know, in so many ways, we're involved in, uh, some of, some type of park and recreational services in the community. We were embarking, we actually plan on breaking ground on a youth center. We are, we've had discussions about a youth center, a community center, and, and many, many other sports activities, sports leagues, and, uh, and support of the arts program. And I think this, uh, piecemeal approach, uh, would not in the long run be in the best interest of the community. So our goal is to, uh, find a way that we can put our resources together. We could have a formal agreement in place to make sure there is no duplication, that there is a, uh, clear understanding of, uh, the facilities and the needs that we have for the community for the long run. We were really looking at the next 20, 30, 40 years of this community and how this community would be best served by our actions today. So that's the purpose, that's the underlying, uh, issue that we're trying to address, and, and we hopefully can get there in short order. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we got a motion and a second. I think I've heard from everyone in here that's on staff that would talk about this. Uh, so with that, I'll take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood has recused himself, and Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Let me get Garrett Beck in here.
Okay.
All right, so. Let's go ahead and move on to public hearing items. Um, I'm gonna call on Stacy to announce the subject.
Grant Line 220, Project DD 9837.
9837.
Tentative subdivision map and specific plan amendments. Item number 11 dash, or 11-1.
Nick, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Um, if you could pull up my PowerPoint, please. Okay. Okay, um, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, Grant Line 220, this project's for Grant Line 220, DD 9837. The, uh, applicant is requesting specific plan amendments and a tentative subdivision map. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so Grant Line 220 is part of the Sun Creek specific plan area. The Sun Creek specific plan is located in the south sunrise area, south of Douglas Boulevard. Uh, the area of the specific plan is shown here in gold and circled in red. Uh, next slide, please. So this, uh, image is of the six properties that make up the specific plan area. Grant Line 220 is located at the top, um, just below what would be Arista del Sol and just west of the, uh, the ranch special planning area. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so the applicant is requesting the following items as part of their project. Uh, they're requesting some, uh, amendments to the Sun Creek specific plan. Uh, they're requesting approval of a Grant Line 220 large lot tentative subdivision map and requesting approval of the Grant Line 220 small lot tentative subdivision map. Next slide, please. So the specific plan amendments that the applicant is requesting is specifically to remove, uh, any references of age restricted, restricted in active adult communities within the specific plan. Um, this is no longer proposed as part of the project, so, uh, these references are proposed to be removed. Um, as part of that as well, the applicant is requesting updates to all maps and figures to include the, uh, new park locations and to reintroduce the Elgro Unified School District school site onto the property. The applicant has also updated population estimates and Quimby Park and Neighborhood Green Dedication requirements, and also updated numbers for, uh, the school facility requirements throughout the specific plan. And, uh, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Stan Meddy from Wood Rogers to speak about the large and small lot maps. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. Uh, Stan Meddy with Wood Rogers on behalf of Grant Line and Chrisanthi Investors. Uh, before I start, I want to just thank staff. This project's gone through a number of, uh, changes over the last year and a half, and we appreciate, the applicant team appreciates their. And we appreciate, the applicant team appreciates their patience in working through a number of issues as we've gone back and forth from both, uh, market rate to a age restricted and back to a market rate project. So, but then I'll just launch into this and say that the project right now, as proposed, is consistent with the prior specific plan. And that is, Nick has pointed that out, I won't belabor the point. Essentially, we're asking for a do-over to go back to the specific, specific plan as it existed prior to the revisions last year, removing the age restricted component. And the reason is simple, the market changes affected by COVID, the recent approval of an active adult gated community on the ranch, and the entrance into the project by National Home Builder Lennar as the co-developer are the reasons behind the change back from an active adult plan to a market project. And with the changes, the project, uh, brings, the change back to a, a market rate plan brought back the park and elementary school as a central focal point of the project. The project includes walkable block length, so generally three hundred to four hundred feet in length. Specifically, no gates, uh, four lot sizes beginning with forty fives, fifty, fifty fives, and sixty by one hundred five foot lots, uh, generally resulting in about a forty, seven hundred to sixty-three hundred square foot opportunity. Stronger pedestrian connections throughout the project along all internal streets and along Americanos and Chrisanthi. Separated sidewalks are included on, along, along all major streets in the plan and along all the internal collector roads. There's a class one regional bike trail consistent with the Bike Master Trails Plan the city's had adopted many years ago, and an additional trail slash maintenance road adjacent to our water quality basin. And then lastly, there's an easement reservation for a landing area within Lot A for a future pedestrian overcrossing to Arista del Sol. Uh, with that, I'll, I want to just say that the applicant accepts the conditions as they will be proposed for amendments this evening. We respectfully ask for approval, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Nick.
Okay, next slide, please.
Kind of started talking about the tentative map before the slide slid, slid over, but.
That's okay, Stan. So, uh, as Stan mentioned, there's, um, a lot of various, um, housing requirements here. A total of eight hundred and forty-five residential units were proposed with the fifty-three point nine acre, uh, remainder lots for future regional town center. Um, next slide, please. So key items of the map included, uh, three high-density residential lots totaling fourteen point two acres, uh, five hundred and seventy-three single-family units, and two hundred and seventy-two high-density residential units, uh, a proposed ten-acre school site, um, eight point two acre water quality basin with a surrounding pedestrian pathway, two neighborhood parks totaling eight point one acres, and a, again, the fifty-three point nine acre remainder parcel for the future town center. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, there were some exhibits that were unintentionally left out of the Exhibit A to the resolution for the project plans. Um, these plans that were left out will be included as part of the approval. Um, they include a preliminary grading and drainage exhibit, a preliminary sewer and water exhibit, um, the Neighborhood Green and Open Space Conceptual Landscape Plan, uh, the Conceptual Neighborhood Entry Exhibit, and a minor, uh, map change for the Sun Creek Specific Plan Amendment Exhibit. So the, the Neighborhood Green and the Neighborhood Entry were included as part of the staff report, but the, the exhibits were not included in the Exhibit A for the resolution. So those will be added, um, as part of the approval once the, um, council's decision has been made. Um, if the council would like to see any of these plans, I do have images that can be pulled up if there's any that you'd like to look at. If not, then I will turn it over to, uh, Mike Matroni, who's also with Wood Rogers, to speak on some of the changes that are taking place to the, uh, conditions of approval regarding the water district.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick.
Next slide, please.
Thank you, Nick, uh, good evening, uh, city council members, my name's Mike Matroni. Just like to echo my colleagues' comments, uh, it's been good to work with staff over the last year and a half on this project. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, seeing this project approved and moving it forward. Uh, the slide that you see before you are two conditions that are being removed in lieu of three additional conditions that provide better clarity, set forth expectations for offsite water transmission mains uh, that supply Grantline two twenty and other developments. These, uh, removal of these conditions and the three additional conditions have been, uh, negotiated with SCWA and SCWA is in agreement. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the first of three conditions that are being added to the project. Uh, Grantline two twenty will require a water line to be constructed to the west across, uh, the ranch project along the future alignment of Chrisanthi Boulevard. This condition speaks to required improvements at the future Morrison Creek tributary crossing with Chrisanthi Boulevard and what will be required of the Grantline two twenty project when constructing offsite improvements. Next slide, please. These two conditions are very similar in nature. They, each one speaks to one of the two pressure zones that are proposed in the Grantline two twenty, um, project. Um, they, they add essentially more specific requirements of Grantline two twenty to provide redundant sources of water to serve the two, uh, domestic pressure zones. These conditions are such that extension of the Chrisanthi Boulevard water line will also provide water transmission main redundancy to existing developments in the north. For that, I'll turn it back over to, uh, Nick, thank you.
Uh, next slide, please. So the Sun Creek Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report was approved on November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Uh, this project was analyzed as part of the Sun Creek Specific Plan EAR and is exempt pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section one five one eight three, consistent, project consistent with the community plan, general plan, or zoning. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, with that, staff recommends that council, uh, determine the project exempt per section one five one eight three, um, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance for the specific plan amendments for the Sun Creek specific plan, and, um, adopt the resolution for Grantline two twenty large and small lot tentative subdivision map with the attached, uh, conditions of approval and the change that were, changes that were proposed with this presentation.
Thank you, Nick.
Next slide.
All right, thank you, Nick. I'm gonna ask the city clerk, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ask the city clerk, is there any speaker cards?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment via email, and there are no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead, close the public hearing and ask if my council has, well, first of all, I ask if council has any comments.
Um, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so, um, my only negative comment, um, Stan, I love your, uh, exhibit, um, I think your sixth, I think it is, about the, um, Neighborhood Entry Monument. Um, I certainly hope that you all can think of something better to call this neighborhood than Grantline two twenty. That would be really great. It's a lovely sign, so let's put something lovely on it, okay? Yeah, what I really want to say about this project, um, you know, ever since the success, ever since it was so obvious that Capital Village is a resounding success, um, David and I certainly and, and other former colleagues have wanted to try to recreate the success of Capital Village in other parts of the city, in our new growth areas. And this particular project comes the closest to that that we have had to date because this is the one that includes, um, this, uh, this peak area, this rest, this reserved space includes opportunities for shopping as well as, um, employment opportunities. And when you think about, and, and I love the, um, the short walkable blocks, um, and, uh, no gates, um, and the pedestrian pathways, that kind of thing. So if you think about what's going on in the world today, and almost every day, um, either on the news or in the major local newspaper, there's an article about, um, people's attitudes about working from home versus working in the office. And if you think about the cities of the future, Capital Village is a great example of where, um, we are surrounded just right here by thirty-five thousand jobs, but people can walk to work. So it's not like, it, it, so in terms of lifestyle, if you wanted to work in your house and your employer approved of that, then you could do that. But if you were on sort of a split schedule where you needed to be in your office a couple of days a week and work from home a couple of days a week, um, and have access to a lot of services, then this kind of project is really what makes a lot of sense today. And I would hope that we would work towards being able to accomplish something like this. Um, uh, Cap Village, we have, uh, four or five different lifestyle opportunities. And here in, um, uh, soon to be renamed Grantline two twenty, I see, um, at least four, I think, if I'm looking at the colors correctly, four different lifestyle opportunities. And, um, and it just really makes sense that we would try to do new neighborhoods that offer the same, uh, um, same kind of opportunities for people. So, um, I hope we can work towards that. And, um, I'm happy to move that we find the prior environmental documentation adequate and appropriate and that this project is exempt and move approval of the, uh, the resolution and waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
I'm gonna close public hearing and ask for roll call.
Uh, I have a comment, too, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, go ahead, David.
Along the lines of, uh, of what Linda just said, you know, I think we are entering a really different era in what people are going to expect from their residents. I just, I was listening to, uh, a bunch of economists today who've done some studies this past year about the efficiency of people working from home. And the summary of, of their conclusions, and they were, they were doing sort of, look at many studies and combined, uh, conclusions were that, uh, maybe forty percent of people are not going to return to an office. So that is a shockingly, uh, large number. Um, and what it does, and apparently you can already see this in some demographic trends, is that if forty percent of your workforce doesn't need to come to your office, they can live potentially anywhere and do remote work. Um, which means not only are they looking for a home, they're looking for a home in a place where they want to live. I mean, you could live in Idaho and work out of the Bay Area, right? It's, it's gonna be a very different world going forward. Uh, I want to be really careful that we've got our eye on, on that ball because this community is already enormously exposed to, uh, office environments as the, as the largest concentration of private sector jobs in Northern California in and around Rancho Cordova. We're enormously exposed to that shift. Um, our manufacturers aren't because you still have to show up to manufacture stuff. People who do things hands-on, uh, we've got a lot of those. But we've also got a lot of large floor-plated office and the potential to harvest an awful lot of those workers from other jurisdictions like the Bay Area. So while we may take a hit on the office side, we probably get a big perk on the relocation side if our neighborhoods are the places that those folks want to live. And I think that means, um, rethinking how we've built neighborhoods. You know, if, uh, if before the neighborhood was a place you drove your car into and parked it, and then you drove your, yourself out of, what happens to that idea when you're there twenty-four hours a day? You know, are you, is it still all about the car?
Yeah.
Or now is it gonna be more about where can I walk while I'm here during the day, during my break, or during the time I'm not working? Where can I take my dog for a walk while I'm here? Or, you know, how do my kids, can I walk my kids to school from here? All sorts of questions like that, can I walk to a coffee shop, I bike to a coffee shop from here? All sorts of things I think are gonna change, uh, about that auto-centric view that we've developed most of the Sacramento region under, that there's, there's real opportunity here for that to change. Um, but we've got to have some development that's, that's ready to sort of hear that. And, uh, I know playing it safe would not be to pursue something like that right now. But, you know, in Rancho Cordova, we're willing to take risks and we're willing to work with people. I think what Linda's reference to Capital Village sort of exemplifies that. There were a lot of people who thought we were nuts for building that. And now, you know, that's written up in the planning textbooks as a, as a remarkable success story. Um, so I think, you know, this is not just about this project. In a way, it is because of the town center being adjacent to the systems particularly important. But for all of our future development, we're really gonna have to look hard at that. Uh, and the way in which we've laid out subdivisions in the past may not work so well going forward. Or if we build it this way, it may not age so well in a future with a very different work dynamic.
David, we need to add to that the fact that, um, we, in the last couple of months, we've been seeing, um, new home plans that provide for, um, a different kind of a home office space than we've ever seen before. It's no longer the little desk counter in the kitchen, you know, with the USB plug in the wall.
That's right. That's not gonna do it.
That's not gonna do it. It's an actual, um, I think one of them called it a flex room that could be used for, um, office room or classroom or sewing room, you know, whatever. But, um, a workout room, um, those kinds of things. So hopefully we'll see more of that sort of, um, new home construction, new home design to, to change.
And frankly, they may want larger lots. You know, if I'm gonna be home a lot, maybe I want a little yard that I can actually do something in, and something, instead of something so small I can't.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you, you can look no further than the room I'm sitting in, has a Peloton behind me, and I've been in here for twelve hours today. So, I mean, it, it, and, and it's got a balcony that I can watch my kids playing in the street. So like, I mean, it, 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 you know, these are, these are, and, you know, luckily we bought a house that had an extra room, but, you know, these are the expectations that are coming. I know we talked about the next gen, you know, homes that Lennar was building here because they were gonna have multiple generations in one home. And I know some of us have experienced that in the last few years or experiencing it now. Uh, but yeah, I mean, every BIA, you know, conference call and meeting that I seem to get in, that's what they're talking about, that they're converting spaces in kitchens and, 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 and other, you know, uh, study areas in common areas and stuff like that, and nips to put desks and other things, uh, like, like the old, you know, telephone desk that used to be in, in kitchens. Um, that, that was a thing in the fifties and sixties, right? That's actually coming back, and it's not just hold a phone book and a phone. Um, but you're seeing, you're seeing the design, you know, trying to keep up with it. And I think it's one of the reasons that you're seeing the demand for Lennar to build these kinds of homes. The, the, that's where the market is really driving towards is especially the people that, you know, have been told now, you know, I don't need to go to Apple and Google and go to their headquarters, that I can work from anywhere, and I'm tired of spending forty-five hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment in the East Bay.
Yeah.
Right? When they can get a four thousand square foot home or three thousand or two thousand square foot home here.
Yep.
Yeah, all good points.
Excellent. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If one of the applicants wanted to respond to what we just said, I, I would find that interesting if they're, if they're so inclined. Stan or Mike or Angelo?
This is Angelo Christie. Uh, I, I certainly think you, you hit the nail on the head. And whereas, um, two or three years ago, we weren't necessarily sure what we were going to do with the, the town center with sixty acres of commercial, I certainly think with the acceleration of absorption in that area of Rancho Cordova and as you've said, more and more people coming from home, people moving to suburban areas from cities where there is more expectation of, um, uh, lifestyle-type commercial for them to visit and spend their time when they're not in their office, that not only did it drive this project, it's also going to be a driver for the development of the town center. And, um, I'd like to remind the council that the town center is actually, um, in and of itself going to be an application and a plan that you will see down the road, and that will need to be something cohesive. Um, the, the town center is a foreign-based zoning, as you know, and incorporates a lot of different land uses. And, and we're really gonna start taking a, a, a close look at that to see how that will fit in with the development. So thank you very much for your consideration tonight, we appreciate it.
Great, we appreciate that.
Yeah, ideally, staff, you blur that high-density housing that's sort of on. Yeah, ideally staff, you blur that high-density housing that's sort of on that old-fashioned land use square right there, you blur that with, uh, town center, you take the greatest advantage you can of that open space with a detention pond, um, and work in something really special in that space.
And, and you're absolutely right, and that, that zoning does allow, um, down the road, if the absorption doesn't immediately happen with the high-density residential, that a plan could come forward that incorporates that into the town center as well. So that's, that's certainly something we'll consider. Thank you.
Housing above stores, or whatever, whatever would work.
Thank you for your time. All right, uh, Stacy, go ahead and get everyone ready for the next one.
June and Darcy, I don't know that I see Bruce or, um, Bill. So Bruce or Bill, if you're on here as an applicant in Zoom, if you can raise your hand. So June and Darcy have brought over, um, Ross and Erin?
Yes, Ross.
Perfect.
All right, Stacy, go ahead and read, uh, the announced subject.
I believe it's Echo Site Two Cellular, uh, Telecommunication Tower at the southeast corner of Zimfandel Drive and Folsom Boulevard, Conditional Use Permit Project DD 10018.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. June Cowl for the Planning Department. And if you can go to the next slide, please. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a fifty-foot-high telecommunication tower, and it includes, um, a design of a clock tower, installation of new lines and antennas, and one thousand one hundred and thirty square foot with ground equipment. It's surrounded by an eight-foot-high masonry wall. Next slide, please. So the project is located in the southeast corner of Folsom Boulevard and Zimfandel Drive, between Grocery Outlet and the Target Store. This is also within the Folsom Boulevard's specific plan. Next slide, please. So the site plan shows that enclosed area and then the location of the, uh, ground equipment and the tower. Next slide, please. And so the applicant submitted the first, um, design was just the straight cell tower antennas. So here are some views from Folsom Boulevard, and then from Zimfandel Drive, and then behind, uh, Grocery Outlet Store. And next slide, please. And they also gave us a pine tree and gave us, uh, photo simulations from the same areas as the cell tower. Folsom Boulevard, behind the Grocery Outlet, and from Zimfandel Drive. And next slide, please. So the concern is the view from Folsom Boulevard and Zimfandel Drive, um, and some of the concerns were also the design should consider and reflect the surrounding area, the Folsom Boulevard infrastructure. Uh, light rail is adjacent to the site, so carrying people that live within the city and out of the city would be going by this area. And we were looking for a signature piece that was tied to the area. Now, I was stationed at Major Air Force Base in the late eighties, and so I do remember Folsom Boulevard and what it looked like. So we conveyed that to the applicant, and we brought back some pictures just to show them how far this area has, has gone and how much it's, um, how much work and investment is in Folsom Boulevard. And showing the infrastructure and design, which included the landscape median, the stamped red brick pavement within the hard surface, and detached sidewalks were included with landscaping, wrought iron fencing, and architectural lights. And so the next slide, please. And so one of the designs that we did look at, um, was the Capital Village Tower in the, uh, the park area. And this is what they, the applicant gave us as a second submittal. Our staff comments were, we would prefer a clock design and to add some architectural elements, a brick color, just to break it up, and also, uh, landscape screen the wall. And next slide, feeling? And so the final design, and I'm gonna give this to Ross, the applicant for Echo Site, and he's gonna go through the final design, the coverage map, and also the landscaping.
Uh, thank you, June. Um, before we continue, I just wanted to say thank you, um, to the members of the staff, particularly June, who helped us come up with a design, um, that we feel both fits our purposes as a telecommunications developer, um, as well as, uh, meets the, the city's overall intent, um, when building out the infrastructure for this commercial area. Um, the, uh, the design that you have before you is mostly complete, um, and as you will see later on in the presentation, um, we will be planting additional faux ivy along the, uh, the CMU Masonry, um, Equipment Shelter to help break up the, uh, the, the site a little bit more. Um, next slide, please. So these are the coverage maps, um, for the existing service on the left-hand side and the proposed service on the right-hand side. Um, as is the case in most, uh, major urban and suburban areas, um, self, uh, telecommunications carriers aren't really bringing in new service for most of these places, they've already been built out. Um, instead, the intention is to add additional capacity for, uh, for cell services, um, for all the carriers, uh, particularly T-Mobile, now that, uh, Sprint and T-Mobile have merged, um, and as, and as has been approved by a recent FCC decision. Um, so this facility is designed to both provide additional capacity for existing T-Mobile customers that are within this area, particularly this commercial area, um, as well as the overall intention of the facility is to place a single site, um, on a major commercial, uh, uh, area that can be used to attract different carriers for co-location purposes. Next slide, please. Um, so yes, you can see again that these are some additional simulations of, uh, what the site looks like at present. Next slide, please. As well as what the, uh, facility would look like, um, once it's in place. Next slide, please. And an additional view, uh, coming from Folsom Boulevard. Next slide. So these are some examples of the faux ivy that, uh, June had mentioned, um, as a solution to break up, uh, uh, the existing CMU masonry and to add a little bit more architectural character to the facility. Um, initially, the staff had suggested that we provide additional landscaping, planted live landscaping, um, but we would not really be able to do this without, um, potentially impacting, uh, our two overall purposes on this site. The first purpose is to not impact the commercial operations of the facility, which we would need to do, um, by increasing the lease area and, uh, potentially impacting the turning radius for the trucks that are going into and out of the Target and the Grocery Outlet, um, or decreasing the overall size of our equipment shelter, which would in turn deprive us of real estate that we could then use, uh, to attract additional, um, uh, carriers to this facility. So we proposed, uh, uh, using some of the existing faux ivy, uh, that we can see on the, uh, the, the right two photographs, um, as a way of, uh, meeting both of our purposes, of both preserving our ability to co-locate on this existing facility and not negatively impact, um, the existing operations of this commercial site, as well as protecting the facility from any potential graffiti, um, and, and, and breaking up the, the, uh, the CMU, uh, uh, features, um, at this site as well. Um, we also, uh, agreed with a condition of approval that is in the, um, uh, the overall COAs, that, uh, our firm will be required to provide, um, maintenance on the existing faux ivy, so to replace it should they become discolored or aged, and, uh, to, to make sure that they're looking, um, uh, just as good as they can on a, on a regular basis. Next slide, please.
And I'll take it back over. So staff recommends the city council find the project that is categorically exempt from Section 15303, and, um, based on the tower development standards on page thirteen of the staff report, adopt resolution approving the Echo Site Two Cellular Telecommunication Tower Facility Conditional Use Permit, uh, subject to the findings, project plan, attachment two, and conditions of approval attachment three. And with that, if you had any questions?
All right, let me go ahead and first ask, is there any speaker cards?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any, um, written public comment for this item, and I do not see any hands raised via Zoom or telephone.
All right, let's start off with council discussion. Um, Linda, can you start us off, please?
I appreciate the, um, the applicant's, um, uh, interest in working with staff to, um, not make this just a tower. I mean, just a, uh, I think you called it a lightning rod with, uh, antennas on top. And I adore, um, clock towers, especially if they come with bells like Big Ben. But I have to say, from my perspective, this is just the most out-of-place project I can recall seeing. It, nobody puts a clock tower in between two buildings. Um, it just... It's a terrible place for it. That's all I can say, sorry.
Excellent. All right, David?
I'd be happy to weigh in, Garrett.
Oh, okay. Good on him.
I, I would say that, that seeing the, the tree first, it, it is funny when we start to look at these things, it's almost like, we get an example that, that's like, okay, we know we don't want that, and then everything else starts to look a lot better, I will say. Um, but I, I think, I mean, you're trying to match the materials that are being used in some of the newer parts of the, the, the shopping centers, uh, so I mean, I, I, you know, it, it's a cell tower, like, you know, in, in the grand scheme of things, there's a whole bunch of versions that would be just horrible looking, um, including, you know, a tree, you know, a faux tree that is, you know, double or triple the size of any tree and, and its surroundings. Um, so I think, um, and, and, I don't know if I thought with one of those sites, it had like the city logo or, or the city, um, crest or whatever we call it, um, but that would be great as well. But I think, I mean, I, I, I appreciate staff coming up with something that's, you know, a little more appealing and I think, uh, a little more fitting. Yeah, I mean, normally you would put, you know, a clock tower in the middle of a shopping center, at the front of the entrance or something like that. But I mean, it's, it's still an opportunity to brand the city and to put something that's, um, more attractive than a massive fake tree or a, a fake cactus like we've seen in Phoenix and a lot of other random things that it can be built to look like. Um, so yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I, these are never really great-looking things, but I think that, just to be honest with you, out of all of the versions I've ever seen, um, this is probably the most attractive one I've, I've seen designed, so I, I'm fine with it.
Okay. David, what do you think?
Uh, these things are always really, um, awkward. You know, we've, we've struggled with these in, in Rancho Cordova and around the region for, for over twenty years. Uh, pre-incorporation, we had Corp Act, was our local planning, uh, council, and, uh, we actually came up with some of the first regulations or rules, suggestions is what they amounted to, for how to build these with having, having the least impact on the neighborhood. Because back then, people were just putting up the, the ugliest things you can imagine, some of which you can still see here and there, and the county was just a green lighting, uh, green lighting everything. But, uh, we've come pretty far in, in how we've done this in Rancho Cordova, and so I, I want to thank staff for actually this effort. Um, previous generations here, we would have, we would have struggled as a council to, to ask staff to do something like this, so I appreciate seeing it done this way. Um, architecturally, I, I, you know, I agree with Linda in the sense that this is an odd place for a tower. The question is how odd, I guess, right? If you're driving, if you're on the street and you see that, is that like a, what in the world is that doing there? Or is that a, oh, interesting? You know, what, what's the reaction gonna be? Is it gonna be a net negative or a net positive or a best of neutral, right? So we're, we're looking for something there that makes it not, not stand out as a negative, uh, and probably something that doesn't make it obviously what it is, uh, which is what was the whole goal. Now, if you look carefully and you see the base, you're gonna be like, oh yeah, that's a cell tower. So, um, I guess the question for the applicant is, they, they don't have room to add landscaping. They had the alternative for some fake landscaping perhaps. I'm definitely not a fan of the camouflage paint. Only that would be a good add. The blank wall is not great. Um, I think, you know, ideally what we'd probably agree on is vines covering this thing would be awesome. Don't know if fake vines are gonna get that done, but is there, is there literally not room to, and vines don't require much in the way of, of a base, they require water, uh, for the most part. Like you freeway, I forgot the species, but the freeway vine requires very little water. What is that species called? It's growing on my back fence here, I can't remember it.
They're using a lot of ivy on the freeway, and they plant it on the inside, poke a hole in the bottom of the wall, and it grows up the outside.
Yeah, there's that too. You can grow it from the, from the reverse side. So I, I think that, that could be an option. Uh, you know, the hard part I've got is I look at the architecture, I think, oh, that's, that's okay, that's maybe close, but I don't know if that's exactly it, but I'm not, I'm not in that business. I'm not good with the aesthetics of it. Um, it seems like there ought to be a way to modify this to make it fit in a little more. I mean, we've got a not real attractive building in Grocery Outlet there to the right. Um, long-term, you'd hope that, that that would look better. Long-term, you'd hope the, even the Target maybe would look better. Or there'd be more landscaping here screening all of this. Uh, I don't know if there's landscape room on the other side of the railroad tracks, for example? If you could plant something in whatever corridors outside the UP right of way there that's still owned by this parcel, that would screen the base? Did you just have a tower coming over a, a landscape base perhaps? I don't know if those options were considered.
You know, um, KP Market actually, um, put, um, cell antennas on the, their front, um, um...
Yes.
What do you call it?
That's right. We, when they, when they did the new entrance, yeah.
Yeah, the buildings are so tall.
Yep.
That that really worked. So, um, um, what about, I forget what the front of Target looks like.
A big red Target.
Yeah, over the front entrance.
Um, council members, if I can comment real quick, just to provide a little bit of elaboration on why this specific design, um, structure was, uh, or this, this structure design was, was picked. Um, Echo Site, which is now owned by Vertical Bridge, is a company that specializes in building long-term infrastructure for cell towers. What that effectively means is that we build, um, towers that, uh, are both the tallest that we can get under the city's conditional use permit requirements, while also fitting in with staff's concerns about the aesthetics for the site, so that we can lease out that tower space to additional carriers who are going to be coming onto the facility. And so that's why we picked a tower instead of a roof-mounted site, because you can't really co-locate on a two-story building and have all of the antennas at roughly the same height, which is essentially the business model for the firm, is to have multiple towers or multiple carriers on the same tower. In terms of finding landscaping, close-ish to the railroad tracks, that was not an option that we pursued, because that is an area that is not directly impacting our lease space. So generally speaking, cell tower carriers are reluctant to lease out space that they're not going to directly be using for operations, right? Which is why we tried to work with staff to come up with a design that both met staff's concerns, particularly in terms of breaking up the CMU block and abating graffiti, while not impacting either our usable lease space within the equipment area or expanding our lease footprint outside of it. Now, my understanding is that in order to maintain lines or to plant additional landscaping as staff had originally suggested, we would need to, at minimum, dig a one-foot trench around the outside of the lease area in order to accommodate the watering and the plants as they're growing and maturing before they become essentially viable on their own. And the underlying property owner was so concerned with our existing lease footprint that he had us conduct a traffic study and a turning radius study to make sure that our existing facility was not going to negatively impact his trucks' ability to get inside the shopping center. So that's just a little additional context for why this design was chosen.
Excellent. Let's go ahead, hold on, let's go ahead and get the rest of my council members, then we'll have you talk. Siri, what do you think?
So, is a telecommunications tower needed? Yes. Is this the right location to provide the most for, you know, to provide more coverage and, you know, better quality for the residential neighbors? Yes. That said, so, I mean, if this is the right location for it, you've probably looked at other areas. So if we're focusing and honing in on this location, I do like that this is blending in with what is there in the other, you know, the other buildings over there. And my thing, I do like the clock tower, but I'm like, why can't we just have both the clock tower and the Ranch Cordova logo? Why should it be this or that? You can have their clock and you can have the Ranch Cordova logo. So with that, you know, I like it, if with the clock and the logo, and it fits in. I do appreciate, you know, your thinking into, you know, the faux ivy, because yes, we are in a drought and, you know, I don't want to have a lot more of plants which require a lot of water. So we should be looking at plants that, adding the greenery, which does not require a lot of water, and maybe a green wall with moss, I don't know, something that actually is aesthetically appealing. So I think you have a lot of potential, new ideas that you could bring into the wall. That's not just a stale wall, definitely not something that would invite graffiti. The faux ivy is a good starting point, but I think you could make it something more attractive. So I, I think this is a good one here.
All right, I'll do my opinion. Go back to the street view, please. Uh, the other side. Yeah, keep going. Put it back to where it would look like when you have the giant. Yeah, it's just, okay, so I come from this arena, so I know about coverage and cell towers and selling and selling points to be able to sell multiple carriers on this stuff. I run this company, I understand this. I hate putting these up in my city, hate. They're god awful ugly and they're just terrifying. To stick this in this area, once we spent all this money to clean it up, have a giant cell tower in the middle of it. I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for it after we put four points, forty million or some ungodly amount into it to draw that I don't, they keep putting worse stuff on this location and just making it bad. It's just going to be a blight in the middle of it for eyesight. So I'm with Linda like almost a thousand percent. I'm like, oh, my God, another giant clock in the middle of our city. That would be our third one. And they keep trying to put giant clocks all throughout the city or giant monuments in the middle of the worst locations. It's like, you know, like where our areas were picking up, we're like, you know, by the Folsom Cordova Partnership, giant clock tower. Right over here by Target, giant clock tower, giant monument, giant statue. It's just, ugh. So let me ask my staff, are you saying that we have to approve the giant clock tower in the middle of it? What is, what are you coming to us for? Where's my guys? Where'd that lady go? June, jump on here real quick, please.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you.
All right, I apologize. I froze and then I'm in the council chambers now. And so the conditional use permit is what the applicant is requesting. Looking at the design and the area for this, for this application for a fifty-foot tall telecommunications tower. And so a third design, I think, unfortunately, I didn't hear all the comments. So the concerns are, of course, the design and the location, is that correct?
Yeah, design, location, the fact that I just put blight in the middle of the location that we spent all this time to put trees and shrubbery and stuff up.
Well, I think they did take a lot of effort here in order to come up with a really good design. It's definitely not, so let me, let me, so let's break it up into two, right? In terms of location, so is this the best location or are there proposals for locations?
Well, they mean, they went to a spot which is near the grocery outlet. They talked to landlords, they leased the space, and then what you do is you try to put a giant.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. So location-wise, so do, so because you don't want this here, is there another location that they have?
Well, I mean, what are the carriers? They said they're trying to bump up T-Mobile. And that's the first carrier they're trying to put in the area to try to boost up when the, like, we don't have the rates and what we're trying to see, like, what are, putting more people on. The area's not growing in membership and people. Like, the thing is, I'm concerned about putting another blighted area when I'm not hearing complaints of my citizens about how their T-Mobile is dropping when they go to Target.
But they're, they do, they did, I'm looking at the report. I'm looking at the coverage map and it does say that they have a lot of complaints. And because of a lot of complaints and due to slow speeds and site congestion, that's why they're trying to do this.
Siri, do you know of anybody in the A region that's in Ranch that has complained about T-Mobile?
Okay, let me ask the applicant how many complaints they do have. Obviously, it's not me knowing somebody personally.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ross.
I don't have that information to hand right now. If you would like, I can look that up and forward that information on to you.
If I can weigh in, Garrett, why on earth would people be calling their city council member about their cell coverage?
Okay, I mean.
They get called about everything.
I get called about everything.
I don't get calls about cell coverage. I get calls about internet coverage and whether or not their kids can do distance learning, but I haven't heard a whole lot of kids that are using their T-Mobile at Target to do that.
Isn't it seem a little odd that if the cell coverage in this area is so bad, that Verizon would put a store right there?
That's a.
There's a difference between selling.
That's not a Verizon store, that's a franchisee. That's just like, that's not an Xfinity store. That's a separate company that franchises and carries their equipment.
Hey, staff, flip back to the one that shows the big giant clock tower that sticks up on, when I'm looking, driving down, can see it from the other side, please? Go back, go back, go back.
That's the clock tower.
No, go flip it to the other side, the one that shows me that I see from the Target view. Nope, nope, nope.
They never gave us a view of that.
That one? Yeah.
So you got to look at it from two points, right? One, it's actually, forget, forget the look and feel and shape of it. First of all, it is an advantage to the neighbors in that area to have better coverage. If that is a plus, then we got to work on, everybody's going to get adjusted to whatever the new, whatever we put in that place. But is this, this is a need for the residents of the, part one? And somebody help me out here and say, you know, I understand that we're not getting additional complaints, but somebody can say, you know, make, I don't know, that this is no need, we don't need this, you know, we, our cell coverage is good. We don't want better cell coverage. Show me somebody who's going to say that. I don't want better cell coverage. My phone never drops.
What they're saying is T-Mobile in this area is trying to boost up their area to get more coverage, to get more.
And other carriers, they're going to add other carriers, not just.
Yeah, but they don't have other carriers, they're not, they're not selling that. I know this, I know this market. So what they're trying to do is boost T-Mobile to be able to come into the area, but they don't necessarily have a bunch of people in T-Mobile that are in that area that are trying to sell right now. My concern is you just put blight into an area that we're trying to clean up and make sure a certain area, and they're just, we're putting the craziest stuff next to the grocery outlet that I can think of to make this area stand out. So, I mean, he had nothing to do with that, but it's just, I don't know if a giant mega clock tower, a mega cell tower, I definitely don't want to see a cell tower. That, I was, I was super upset they're trying to put one over by the Folsom Cordova, because that just would, that hurts an area. It doesn't make it better. You know, it does, this look doesn't clean up or facilitate growth or success. It takes it down in the opposite direction. It's just, do we want to go down that path? Now, you're saying we're having issues. I, I don't see it from my constituents saying, we have horrible cell service, what are you doing about that? I get it, we're not going to see it, but it's not showing it in the report either.
Garrett, I have horrible cell service at my house. I don't think I've complained, I've not complained to myself about it, I just deal with it.
Would you want a giant clock next to your house?
I want better solid coverage.
So are you willing to have that blight in your area? That's what we have.
It is not a residential neighborhood, it is a commercial neighborhood. And like I said, we have to look at other, are there other locations where they could do it? They have agreement, again, this is a conversation and we need to look, if there are other locations that they can do it, yeah, great. But with that said, in this particular location, if they can do it, other than aesthetically pleasing one, maybe, maybe that's the only thing is that, that's the gating factor, you can go ask the applicant to come back with other designs. But personally, I like the clock tower, I like the fact that it shows Ranch Cordova. And it's blending into.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, what I don't understand about this conversation is everyone's super proud of the clock tower that's at Capital Village, yet this is a problem here. I don't understand, I mean, they're matching the materials in this shopping center. They're, it sounds like they're open to branding it for the city. I wouldn't want the logo, I don't want our city seal, I couldn't think of that word last time, which is on the tower that's at Capital Village. So I'm just struggling to understand why this is a blight and a horrible thing. Now, if you were just to throw up a cell tower, just a big monopole with a bunch of stuff sticking out of it, okay. If you were going to stick, you know, you're looking at, you know, twelve to fifteen-foot high trees there and then we're going to put a fifty-foot fake tree in the middle, okay, I get it. But it's also the argument, when they came back to us at the church site on Coloma and said, yeah, you know, the church had recommended to do a big fake tree, and we said, no, do a clock tower with a church logo on it with a cross on it, because it fits with the site that they have. So I don't, I, I, maybe it's just, I have a different opinion. I've seen so many bad versions of these cell towers going up. That, I mean, to me, the applicant and staff have gone a long way to try to present an aesthetically pleasing tower. I mean, I, what, what is the bad thing about this? Well, and again, I, I've heard all of your comments, so I don't really want to hear them. Again, I'm just telling you, I do not agree with you about this idea that somehow a clock tower is a blight.
All right.
I don't agree.
Go ahead, Linda.
You're right that the staff and the applicant need to be complimented. But you asked the question about the difference between this and the one at the Village Green, and there's a huge significant difference, and it's what we call placemaking all the time. The one at the Village Green specifically anchors the entire walkway system for the Village Green. The walkway goes under the little house.
I've seen it, I get it.
Okay, all right. So it's a very specific part of the entire aesthetic. There are three-story buildings around it and the very large Lowe's, and it fits, and now the four or five-story BDX, it fits the area, it fits the context. This is an example of flopping a clock tower, handsome as it is, down in the middle of absolutely nothing.
We're also dealing with a shopping center that this one parcel is the only thing not owned by the, by the rest of the owner basically of that. And they've worked on redesigning the flow and the traffic patterns and everything around here. Is it perfect? No, but, but if they're looking to site a cell tower at all, and ultimately, we've talked a lot about connectivity issues throughout the city in the last year that have really, you know, made kids and families and working from home a difficulty, and, I mean, this is in demand. And if it's not going to go here, it's going to go down, what, next to the post office or something else? It still needs to be this tall. I mean, one of the struggles I think that we have to understand about this community, and I'm saying Ranch Cordova in general, but a lot of the communities in the valley that aren't at Folsom and El Dorado and up the hills are, we have no topography. They can't put this on top of a mountain, right? They have to build something tall enough that can reach everything, because it's flat here. Do I like that? No, is this the perfect proposal? No, but they've worked really hard, well, I shouldn't say to the, I don't know how hard it was to design this, but to give us something, I mean, if you just compared this to the last clock tower that we looked at that was going to go on Coloma on top of the Cordova partnership, this is an extremely better-looking and aesthetically pleasing proposal comparatively to the other things that I've seen. Again, I don't think I've ever seen one that I love, but this is one I'm willing to vote for, personally. So we've been talking about this for quite a bit, and I think we all know what our opinions are, so I will move the staff's recommendation.
I second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just come up here.
Go ahead, David.
Some, maybe I have my thoughts a little more together, but I'd like to throw something out that my colleagues might, might take interest in thinking about. You know, long-term, Folsom Boulevard's not going to look the way it looks now. It's vastly improved over what we started with as a city, but frankly, we've still got a lot to go. We've got a lot of underutilized commercial space, like the empty drugstore that's directly across the street from this proposed tower, vacant lots there. And we've got light rail, we've got a state that is strongly encouraging and even now starting to have funding projects along old corridors like this that have mass transit. My guess is, you know, twenty years from now, there will be three and four-story buildings at these corners. Walmart might still be there functioning as it does, Safeway, perhaps same thing, but, you know, grocery outlet site where that old drugstore is or the side diagonal across from here, I would expect some density to be added here. And when you do that, three, four, five stories, I don't know, whatever, whatever the economy and the project can sustain. And in that context, this is no longer the flat suburb anymore, right? Now, now, we look like a flat suburb, basically, a really flat suburb, because as Donald just said, we don't have any real geography, we're just pancake, flat. There's something about having a tower there that actually does create some sense of place as out of place as it might be. Right? I mean, look, from these particular angles that they're showing us right here, it actually is like kind of almost interesting. You know, if you could get the architecture right, it would be like, oh, that's kind of interesting. I know that that is, I know that that's a thing, that's a place.
If I'm trying to find KP International, I know where this is. Right?
As opposed to now, all we've got are suburban shopping buildings of, you know, one, one and a half story with gigantic parking lots and some trees. And a Popeyes, you know, I mean, it's just like, this is a little.
Let's not, let's not rule out that, why'd you have to throw Popeyes in there? Let's not, let's not, let's not rule out the, why'd you have to throw Popeyes in there?
That, I don't.
I was there with you and then you put Popeyes, like, you don't have to add.
It's right in front of me, I'm not, I'm not being discouraging Popeyes. I'm gonna go eat there later, okay?
Thank you.
Great.
All right, so let's, eh, let's, are you ready for a vote, guys?
Um, I'm wondering if there's some, some room for modification here. Like, I, I heard Siri suggests, why wouldn't we have our logo up there? That's not a bad idea. Eh, people who've been going up.
City seal, not the logo.
Um, yeah, I don't know.
'Cause you might change the.
That's one of those design decisions that I just ate.
Linda, what do you think on that?
Oh, we need a planning commission to talk about.
No, we got Linda.
City seal like, um, eh, Cat Village, like the village.
Yeah, city seal of Cat Village.
Yeah.
Maybe you put that below the clock and it gives it a little more articulation. I just don't want this thing to look, I mean, it's a fake tower that has no purpose of its own cellphone use and the clock, and now advertising what city we're in. I just wanted to look as, this is a dumb word for this purpose, but I guess architecture might make sense, as organic as possible.
Can I get an electric, if we're gonna do it, can I get an electric sign on it?
No, can I, can I give you a, can I, can I, can I make a suggestion, David?
Linda's not gonna survive the meeting if we continue down that road.
Wait, hang on, hang on. David, you and I, I.
Rock, you wanna have an electric sign?
Wait, Garrett, hang on. So, so David, you and I sat in those meetings with the county when we were trying to put a, um, a sign on, um.
Sunrise.
On Sunrise Boulevard in the middle, right, eh, eh, we didn't call it a landmark sign, but there was a word for it.
Like a welcome to Rancho Cordova sign.
Monument, monument, monument.
A monument sign, thank you. And it was, I don't think it was gonna be this tall, but it was gonna be half this size, I would say. But the design that we came up with using, eh, eh, I wanna say architectural rust and everything, it just got installed in the south side of, or the west side of Sunrise, um, on the city side, right? So it didn't confuse people in Gold River, um, that, you know, about where they live, which was the argument that, that the county was making, eh, or an individual of the county. Um, but if we weren't even dust off that to look at a logo or, or, or matching that monument sign or some of the, eh, eh, the materials for that for maybe two of the sides, so two sides are a clock, two sides are some sort of placemaking, you know, eh, monument sign for the city? And maybe that's something that, from a design perspective, that even the city might be able to fund. I, I don't know if that's possible, if that triggers other issues, and I, I, I don't wanna get into it. But I'd be interested in dusting off what we've done and looking at monument signs to try to come up with something for this, um, that's not just the clock, that somehow is, eh, eh, is a monument to, to the city. Um, 'cause I mean, and, and again, folks, let's also remember, we got water towers, you know, popping up here in some instances where we weren't even talking about it.
Oh, don't get me started on that, oh.
Right, so I mean, there are other things going up that are just gonna have to happen. We do have some control and some influence over this. Um, a- a- and I think, yeah, hon- honestly, it's something that, you know, for miles away, you'd be able to know, okay, I'm getting closer to KP International or Grocery Outlet or Target or whatever. Um, which here, you, you know, you just have to, you know, bear your head and watch your GPS and try to, you know, find your way there. Like, this is, you know, and it, it also will improve, you know, walkability 'cause people will wanna, you know, be out and about and be able to use their phones and not just think, "I gotta go home so that I can send that email or check my text messages or watch a movie" or whatever. Um, so this could, this could lend to, you know, the, the, the abilities of, of connectivity. But I think, I think, you know, I, I would strongly urge planning staff to work with, I guess it's Public Works that was behind maybe the, the sign that we put on, on, on Sunrise. Um, but maybe looking at that and seeing if we can come up with some complimentary materials to, to what that was.
Wait till you see the next sign down at Red Shaw before you make up your mind. Eh, let's call the questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, so we had a, a first and a second.
I'll move, eh, to amend the motion, actually.
Okay, go ahead, David.
So rather than a straight-up approval, I would just suggest we continue this to our me- next meeting and allow staff to work with the applicant, um, perhaps an architect or whatever other, eh, specialist we may need to try to create some sense of place out of this monument that, um, doesn't, doesn't exist now.
So you're saying June twenty-one?
If that timeline works, sure.
Yeah, I, I won't be at our next meeting, so I prefer a later date.
That's, that's fine too, unless it wrecks the proposal.
What, what is the timing of the applicant?
I assume they want it up.
I guess, I guess, I, I take it back. I, I might be able to.
Are you gonna try to do this while you're in a, now, Donald, come on, man.
I'm, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on vacation and out of town.
Come on, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll kick it to the next meeting. It'll be fun. July.
So, so council, eh, just for your information.
It's dark in July.
Eh, no, we're not, we're not dark, eh, the entire month of July.
Okay.
Eh, the first meeting in July is, eh, council, but the council calendar still showed a meeting on July nineteenth. So, eh, if the council is re, eh, planning to go dark in July, they need to take action to cancel that meeting. But as of this, as of now, we do have a meeting on July nineteenth.
Would that work for the applicant waiting that long? With the expectation that I think you've heard of three council members hoping to some additional design work would probably get you an approval?
That works for us.
Okay, and I was gonna say, if you just force us to vote right now, I don't think you have the votes.
I, I'd add the comment, um, you know, I mentioned landscaping along the rail line. I wouldn't view that as being on this applicant. I'd view it as being on the property owner who they're leasing the land from. It'd be, it would have to be part of their deal to say, "Yeah, we're gonna deal with some of the ground, ground issues."
Thank you for the clarity on that, council member.
Yeah, and, and, eh, for the applicant, if, if you want to get one of the members' votes, I'd like to see the problem that we're taking care of with this cell tower. So, the information that says that we need it.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, so David amended a very long sentence.
Yeah, so I will, I, I believe from a procedural standpoint, I will withdraw my original motion if Siri is okay with that.
You can make it a friendly amendment.
Friendly, I take it.
Then I, okay, I will accept the friendly amendment to continue the item.
Eh.
It's a, it really is a different motion, but that's okay. I will take it as a friendly amendment and can, and move to continue the item.
Pretty different.
Until, right, until, until our meeting in July. And I think I got an acceptance from my second term. So I believe the motion would now be to continue this item until our meeting in July.
Brogo.
And is.
It's just a substitute motion.
And was the motion by, motion by Sander?
No, it's a motion still by Terry and, and Pulapati.
Okay, very good. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Kinda weird, kinda weird to do it that way, but we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Brogo.
Um, we have, eh, council member Pulapati.
Yes.
Council member Budge.
To continue the item, yes.
Council member Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Siri, I mean, eh, Stacy, go ahead and set up for the next meeting.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience with this.
A good challenge, make place out of a placeless.
Walk a good path. Please sit down.
Is Adam here?
You're on the other dial.
Um.
Excuse me.
Garrett, we've had, Garrett, don't we probably need five minutes?
Oh, yeah, we can take a bathroom break. All right, eh, let's meet back at eight eighteen. So you guys can go use the bathroom.
I, I, I don't believe he did, so why don't we just see if there is any public comment? I don't believe that there was.
All right. Is there, I'm gonna open public hearing. Is there any public comment on eleven point two?
The city clerk's office has not received any via email, and there are no hands that are raised via Zoom.
I'm gonna close public hearing. And we already did the rest, right?
Thank you, yes.
Yes, sir. And for the record, you did not observe any hands up, eh, previous, eh, in the conversation regarding that item.
That's correct.
All right, Stacy, can you please read this subject for the first regular calendar item?
Yes, discussion and possible direction to prepare an ordinance regarding host liability for illegal fireworks.
Well, this is really important, guys, so let's try to get this done. Adam.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council, and members of the community. This is a, eh, important subject of a potential change to the municipal code regarding host liability for illegal fireworks. The action that we're seeking here tonight is a conversation by the council about, eh, what you think of this approach, eh, whether or not, second, whether or not you think this approach, eh, would justify staff attempting to do this as an urgency ordinance, such that it would be effective this year? And also, some direction regarding the extent of the, eh, the punishment for violations as between misdemeanors or infractions. And with that, we will dive into the item. Eh, as the council has, eh, has witnessed and discussed, there has been a significant increase in illegal fireworks activity in summer months and also, including, um, in other months of the year, more frequent, and there appear to be more frequent, eh, launches of illegal fireworks, both, eh, large explosions and also in particular aerial fireworks that have a particular risk of fire danger, um, because they go far off property and, and are uncontrolled in their location and often land and they still burning or, um, potentially burning state. Um, and the fireworks threaten property far from the launch site. They also, um, can cause an increased response times for emergencies and therefore cause property damage and potential threats to health and safety that go far beyond just those immediately impacted homes, properties, and, eh, and, and per- personal property. So the council recently asked us to bring this item to you to talk about the tool that other agencies in our region have started to explore and have, eh, recently adopted. Um, eh, safe and sane fireworks are obviously, eh, an important, eh, part of not only the city culture and the funding sources for many of our nonprofits, but also something that continues to be allowed in the city for a small period of time from June twenty-eighth to July fourth. Um, that, again, is not what we're talking about, regulating or restricting in any way with this ordinance. What we are talking about is changing, um, the way we would prosecute illegal fireworks, eh, following a pattern, following, following a, an approach that has worked well for us in the area of, of the, eh, consumption of, of alcohol. And that is to, instead of targeting and requiring that you actually see the person who launches the fireworks or you see the person who's actually, you only, or you only prosecute, and as we've done with alcohol, we no longer only prosecute the, the, when the person is consuming, the, eh, minor is consuming, we instead prosecute the host who creates the place, who creates the environment, who creates the location, um, from which the illegal activity originates. So it's a tool that we hope and believe could make it much easier for enforcement activity to stop illegal fireworks, um, just as it already has done, to make it, eh, easier to stop illegal consumption of alcohol in, in the city under our municipal code. So we would look to specifically regulate, um, and, and allow the city to go after, eh, the owners, the tenants, the landlords or property managers of property, and any person who organizes or supervises or controls or is in charge of the property from which there are launches or, um, or, or lighting off of these fireworks. Um, in other communities, educational campaigns regarding this type of social host ordinance against fireworks has been successful, and, um, it is something that we could look at, eh, adopting. We can clearly, um, update and adopt this for the coming, eh, for the, the, the next year. Um, but there is also arguably a basis for adopting this as a, um, as an urgency ordinance. Eh, I have included in the staff report the, the difference between and requirements for adopting urgency ordinances. Eh, they become effective immediately, but we, we would need to include persuasive findings that justify the need to take immediate action. Um, and then you would need to adopt it by a four-fifths vote at the next council meeting. The final issue I would bring to your attention, potentially on this subject, is the en- enforcement, you would have a choice of authorizing us to prosecute this as an infraction. Infractions have, um, graduated, um, fine amounts that start relatively low and, and, and go up, um, um, to five hundred dollars for the third offense. Or alternatively, you could prosecute, you could give us the authority to prosecute this as a misdemeanor. Misdemeanors, um, eh, have first-time fines of up to a thousand dollars and also carry with them the possibility of, um, of imprisonment of, eh, up to six months. In reality, most misdemeanors, um, do not result in, 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 eh, actual, um, jail time, but that potential threat or the occasional use of that threat of jail time can be a very, very powerful, um, motivator to attempt to stop the, eh, the ille- illegal activity. And again, this is something that is a, a very significant threat to public health, so we would have no objections to the council in this case deciding that, that it was appropriate to allow it to be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. So with that, again, we just seek your direction on, do you support this basic approach? Eh, do you want us to, um, eh, eh, attempt to justify this immediately as an urgency ordinance for you to consider at the next council meeting? And do you think this should be prosecuted as a misdemeanor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. But I have a question. Um, Adam?
Yes.
So, um, unfortunately, due to, eh, the last, what, eh, maybe five or six years of actions by the voters in California, an awful lot of things that many of us think should be crimes have been reclassified as misdemeanors and therefore, um, um, not only does that have its own impact on society, but the, um, but law enforcement basically wastes their time if they try to take them downtown and get them booked and then have them released and with nothing but a slap on the wrist. So, um, how does classifying this as a misdemeanor result in a change of behavior? Is this something that you would use our community pro- or you would envision our community prosecutors and code enforcement getting involved in? Or how would that work from a practical standpoint? How do we put teeth in this?
Sure, so, so, um, eh, I'll attempt to answer the question. Eh, we have not yet had the opportunity to thoroughly vet this with, eh, and talk about the actual enforcement strategy with code and PD in, in the extensive way we have had some initial conversations with them. So I'm going to, um, to, to make a, an initial answer to that question. But I think one of the most important things it would do is allow you to immediately find, eh, impose a large fine. And that, in particularly in future years, as we have additional time to inform, um, the community about this, the possibility of getting, um, for, as a, as someone hosting a party, if somebody shows up at your house and you see that, in addition to the safe and sane fireworks that you've purchased from a valuable, reputable and important nonprofit group that serves the city of Rancho Cordova, that someone shows up at your house with, with bottle rockets or roman candles or some other illegal firework, that you would immediately know, this is a big deal. I face a potential fine of a thousand dollars. It's not going to be, um, sometimes infractions are considered to be more of a slap on the wrist. And particularly for some folks, um, they would say, you know, the, the. And particularly, for some folks, they would say, you know, the progressive nature of them means that the chance that we would cite the same person for illegal fireworks a second or third time to get into the range where the actual fine amount is high may be pretty low. So this could be one where a heavy education campaign, warning people extensively. On the other hand, I will tell you that when someone with very, very low income comes into you and says, "I just got a $1,000 fine and I'm not going to be able to pay my rent," that can be, that can be a, I just caution you that in some communities, when you impose $1,000 fines on members of our community who have very low income, you might expect to hear, "I didn't understand this, and here are the dire consequences that will result to me and my family if you impose this." So in some communities, when you have misdemeanors that are prosecuted actively, you occasionally see a higher rate of cutting the amount that's been imposed. Forgive me for the long answer.
Yeah, I do, I know, I do understand. And obviously, we'll deal with that. I think four of us have access to the same, or what Nextdoor purports to be the same Nextdoor link.
Community.
Okay, good one. And there are a couple of very specific neighborhoods that, over the past year since the Fourth of July, have reported, repeat, 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 large fireworks explosions. So number one, it strikes me that this really could ultimately be an effective tool to deal with that. And, number two, it really does need to be an emergency ordinance so that it goes into effect for this year.
Cyrus, would you have any other comments on that enforcement choice or from your experience? And you would offer, did I give a complete answer?
Nothing, nothing more than what you have said. I just want to caution you because we do come across other types of citations that our residents have no ability to pay, and it does put them in a very difficult position. And a judgment call has to be made at some point that, you know, how we enforce it, how far we go with it. And ultimately, what happens if somebody just simply is not able to pay? What is the next course of action? What's the ramification of it?
Can I ask a question about that? In those cases, because I know we do this for code enforcement and a whole bunch of other things, that, one, you can work out deals, or there's community service, in some cases, I know, in like the court systems and things like that. But, I mean, the more important, and I'm not, I don't want to downplay the fact that paying restitution and paying these fines for violating the law need to be serious, but the consequences of violating the law are really serious as well. The number of grass fires that we've had in the last week. I know I was texting all of you this weekend of the ones that we could see that it was so large, it almost seemed like it was in the city and it was miles away. But we've had multiple grass fires, some, you know, because of negligence, some of it from stupidity, and some of it just because, you know, something sparked near a road. But if we look back at last year, when there wasn't that community organized event, that residents just took to themselves to go find whatever they could from Nevada or God knows where and shoot it off, and I'm amazed that we didn't have more issues than we did have. But if you go and you look at Folsom Lake, you go look at Orville Lake, you go look at the river and a lot of other things right now, we are in an extremely serious drought. And we've already had 100-plus days in May. Like, by the time we get to July 4th, it's going to be really dangerous. And so, yeah, I think this is a very serious topic to look at. We already have the bones of this in place when it comes to serving alcohol to minors at your home. Again, this isn't just, you know, beating up homeowners, this is beating up party hosts. So if you're renting and your name's on the lease and you're doing this in a home that you're leasing, this is your problem too. So if you're going to have people at your home, you need to behave yourself. And if you're going to put your neighbors and the neighborhood in danger, then you're going to be held accountable for that. And that's what I think the whole point of this is. As far as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, there's already a fine in place for setting off illegal fireworks within the city. The only difference is, right now, our police and our code enforcement, the answer that they will give, and especially if you call 911 on Fourth of July, which I have done, is unless you can see them doing it, or our police officers can see them actually setting it off, we can't charge them. What this is saying is, if we can see that it's originating from your backyard, we're going to knock on your front door and we're going to say, "We saw fireworks that went off in the backyard." And so we're either going to find you, or you're going to tell us and work with us to tell us who set it off so that we can find them. Because somebody's going to be held accountable for this. Because ultimately, the answer can't be, if I'm sitting in the backyard, I can shoot off roman candles, and when somebody says, "The cops are coming," I can just stop and, you know, if something landed on the neighbor's house or whatever else, eh, well, they can't catch me for that. So we're trying to come up with a new way of enforcing this for public safety. And I accept this, that a fine may be difficult for some people, but somebody's house catching on fire and then running out of their home in the middle of the night on Fourth of July, if that means a couple of people are going to be put in some difficult situations, but we're preventing that situation, I'm fine with it.
Right, and you got to think, like, just the amount of money it's going to cost to re, like, if one of those fires had, like, I saw people actually lighting illegal fireworks off, shooting M-80s and rockets into the air.
Yep.
We didn't even know who they were, they were just in the neighborhood shooting those off. And if that had caught fire and burnt or killed somebody, who cares about the fine they would have? Like, we have to do something to protect our citizens, and I think Siri-
Even if it doesn't burn down the house, if it causes a grass fire, that requires 10 engines to show up and they got to go get the backhoe or the bulldozer to make a fire line out of it, and you have 30 firefighters over here because of that, this is enough of a reason. A $1,000 fine to prevent that kind of activity, I think is reasonable.
Yeah. Siri, what do you?
And if you look at it, our code enforcement fees are not the same today as they were 20 years ago. We have amended them a couple of times. So if we end up with issues that, like Cyrus has identified, then we always have the ability to come back and tweak the fee.
Yeah. I agree. Siri, go ahead, you have a, Siri, you have a word.
So my only thing is, we're all in alignment of this. I don't think we need to add any more comments, other than the fact is, what are the next steps? I mean, our peer sister cities have done that, Folsom has done this, Sacramento City has done this. So we don't need to go on into the benefits of doing this, which we all absolutely are in alignment for. So in terms of next steps then, what needs to be done?
From judging by the council comments, I think we've heard, thank you, Councilmember Polapati, I think we've heard from all of you, I think it's clear that you are in alignment that there is a very strong interest in us looking diligently for, and using the comments you've made here as a basis for urgency findings, and that we would include misdemeanors. I think as Councilmember Polapati summarized, the council used correctly when she said, "Yes, yes, yes."
Adam, I have a comment or a question about the misdemeanor. So in that situation where someone can't afford a $1,000 fine, is there a work alternative for that? How does that work?
I think that we'll bring that back for you in the next council discussion. That obviously is a comment and a suggestion that would go potentially beyond the scope of this. I would just say, for me personally, when we've done some of our more aggressive and new code enforcement changes, giving someone the alternative, potentially, of working it off by publicizing it or by doing some other community outreach or by doing some other public work, some other community service that would be directly related to that issue. That's something, Cyrus, I would be certainly happy to discuss and explore, is a possibility with code. But they could help us enforce and prevent in ways, potentially, in certain circumstances other than paying their fine.
So there's same cities, particularly back east, that are trying to derive revenue from things like this, and it ends up being a real oppressive situation for the economically challenged in the community, and I don't want to get anywhere near that. I don't want fireworks going off. I mean, literally, my house, probably every single night I hear fireworks. And I can tell you what directions it's coming from, but I have no idea. I mean, it's impossible to figure out who would do that. It's totally random times, you know, between 5:00 PM and 2:00 AM. But there's regular big bangs, sometimes there's lights in the sky from it. It's just a regular thing. And I can tell you, talking to colleagues around the nation, it's not just us. This is nationwide. Something has happened, maybe fireworks have gotten cheaper, maybe it's just gotten popular. People are doing it because everybody else is doing it. And there's a cultural shift of some kind, but, you know, this is happening all over the place, not just Rancho Cordova. But it is a remarkable shift from a few years ago.
I would just absolutely assure the community that regardless of what fine amount you've just set, and potentially setting it at up to $1,000, this will not be a profit deal for the city. The city will stop threats to public health and safety, not make money off of its enforcement efforts.
I can also say with some surety that this won't stop it, right? I mean, there's, just, you know, if you go on social media and you engage in discussions about this, you'll find that there are dozens of locations around the city where this is happening, which probably means there are hundreds of houses where this is happening. We're never going to track all those down, new ones will pop up. Maybe we can tamp it down a little, but this is, almost because of its very nature, an uncontrollable sort of thing. It's out of our hands to be able to fully control it. We can do what we can do, and this is this ordinance. But I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to put the impression out there that this is going to fix it, because I doubt it.
No, David, it's a good point, but it also, the comments that you and I, I know, have been getting in the last few years, right? I think we have to acknowledge that this is a growing problem, and we need to come up with, we need to come up with a different way because what's happening now isn't working.
Yeah, our current method does not, does not work.
And it's only going to get more dangerous. And I'm not even talking about the fact that, I mean, I grew up in a community that safe and sane fireworks were illegal. So if you drove to Sacramento and brought them back to the county I grew up in, you'd get the same fine that we're talking about right now. And we're not talking about that, but just from the standpoint of the drought, the danger that dead trees and dead grass and everything else is so much worse by the time we get to July than it used to be three or four years ago. That we have to at least acknowledge that we've got to try something, you know.
Right, and if what we, and if what we do saves a couple houses and stops one grass fire, it's worth it. It's much more than a thousand bucks. So, so, what do you need?
I move that we direct staff to come back to return at our next meeting with an emergency ordinance. It includes some of the details that we have talked about tonight.
Did we have public comments in this?
Yeah, let's go ahead, let's ask for public comment, go ahead.
So-
Stacy? We got an email.
The city clerk's office did receive two public comments via email. The first one is from Donald Childs, the second one is from Leah Colwell Hernandez. And we do have a hand raised in Zoom. Dennis, I'm going to unmute you and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi.
And I would note, all of the public comments by email were supportive of an ordinance.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Dennis, welcome.
Hi there.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Ravel, and I'm appearing on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks, the state's leading wholesale distributor of state-approved fireworks here in California, and the single largest advocate of communities such as Rancho Cordova adopting and implementing the fireworks social host ordinance. I would say that we can make available to Mr. Lindgrom and staff a library of all the ordinances like this that have been adopted across the state so that you can pick and choose that which is best for the components that are best for your community as you present the emergency ordinance. Secondly, I would share with you that there is a growing movement within the state legislature to increase the fine levels for illegal fireworks for general law cities. Obviously, charter cities have the ability to level the fines that they think are reasonably necessary. But this year, the Chair of the Assembly Governmental Organization Committee introduced AB 1497 that would significantly raise the fine levels for the general law cities can use for these types of violations. So we enthusiastically support the council's move in this direction and are available to be of any assistance we can to city staff and the drafting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, guys, you heard from the council.
And Seth, when you come back, could you bring us some rough statistics that sort of line it out? Like, I looked at national numbers, and there's like 400,000 fires a year, and I think maybe 20,000 of them are fireworks-related. I don't have any idea how many we have in Rancho Cordova in recent years that have been fireworks-related. That would be interesting.
Yeah, we can certainly research that, and other statistics that you may be interested, that we do hear as our code enforcement and police officers respond to calls related to fireworks, many, many of them are discharged on public property. So it's not necessarily tied to a house or a log.
Yeah.
And by the time they get there, nobody's there to be found.
Or behind a grocery store in the middle of the night, or all sorts of things like that, right?
Parking space, yeah, exactly.
Or a clock tower.
Or a clock tower.
Nice, nice, very good.
Mayor Gatewood, we have another-
Now, if we had fireworks off the top of the clock tower, hmm.
Mayor Gatewood, we have another public comment on this item. The name is D-I-L-I-P, Delip. So you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. This is regarding, I don't know whether this is the right forum to bring this up. Wanted you guys to legalize, you know, safe fireworks for the Diwali, which is the festival of lights, which happens in November.
Yeah, this would, this would be the time to talk about that.
No. Nope.
Um, uh-
All right.
I don't know if we have that authority.
We don't even, we don't even have a rule like that.
I don't know.
Folsom does, Folsom does something like that, so Delip, I got you.
It's part of the municipal code, but it would be, it would be separate to, this is an enforcement discussion.
I thought it was state law too, I don't know.
Yeah, let me, Delip, I got your question, let me look at what Folsom does, and we'll talk about it closer to November.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Siri, help him find somebody to talk to, okay?
All right, so let's go ahead and move to 12.2.
Um, we need to vote.
Yeah, we need to vote on this one.
No, we do not, because she said that just, what they're saying is they just need instruction and then they'll come back with a-
No, 12.2.
12, we're on to 12.2, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on item, on item 12.1, we had a motion, Linda had a motion for an emergency ordinance.
I will withdraw the motion.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, wait, Adam, is that what you mean?
I guess that's fine, we're fine either with or without a motion, the direction of the council is very clear.
The direction is clear.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Excellent.
12.2.
12.2.
Just a roll call.
Well, hang on. Go ahead, Stacy, 12.2.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova approving a 5% performance incentive payment for Cyrus Abhar for service as city manager.
All right, let's-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council, a brief report here, the City Council, following a conclusion that the city manager's performance in 2020 was exceptional. We have spoken with the council, and this item is before you to seek your approval of a 5% performance incentive and acknowledgement that there will be a consumer price index pursuant to the terms of this contract. And his, the total compensation of the city manager, including these, is available for public review. And with this, we would ask for a council motion to adopt the resolution that will authorize this performance incentive package based upon previously adopted standards for performance.
All right. Stacy, is there any public comment? Stacy, is there any public comment?
The city clerk's office did not receive any written public comment, and there are no hands raised in Zoom or by phone.
Okay, so I'd be willing to make a motion to approve the item. I'd also like to point out, for those of you who have been keeping track of executive compensation for local governments in the area, that this is not a retroactive action that we're taking tonight, unlike some other cities or counties or other groups that may remain nameless, that may have gone back even two years ago and given performance pay increases, that this is effective now, not then. And so with that, I will move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi.
Thank you.
And if I could just note for the record that the city manager did not participate in, his lights and camera were off on this item. And similarly, I did not participate in a consent calendar item related to mine, but because it was a consent calendar item, I did not leave the meeting entirely.
And Adam, specifically, this item, by law, we are not allowed to put on consent, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
Post-stump.
And at that, do we have any future agenda items, guys?
We already got a lot on the calendar.
Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Cecil Dyer, our first with you. Thank you for everything you did for my community, and meeting adjourned.
Thanks for having me. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Much love to them.